Screen that area. That area is supposed to be in a kind of pristine condition. And again, I think there's some -- maybe the loading zone didn't work as well as it was supposed to, but this should help, at least to block some of that activity from the parking lot. The ongoing concern that I have continually brought up to Stop and Shop is their treatment of Pleasant Street. That is supposed to be the front of the building, not the back of the building. And a lot of these improvements, I think, address that. There's some ongoing management that still has to be implemented in there on how that particular area is treated. There's -- part of the reason for the moped idea is that there's motorcycles and mopeds being parked under that space, which basically block it for pedestrian use. And also that we want to see more of the seasonal decorations and other things being placed on that streetscape. That streetscape is a very important part of the Mid Island area, and we don't want bad habits to be ingrained there. I think some of you remember how the Sparks Avenue side looked for a while with the boarded up -- well, not with the boarded up, but the closed windows and the sort of no man's land there. That's not our vision at all for Pleasant Street. So I want to just reaffirm that. At every meeting that we have, I know you guys have heard it, but I want you, the board, to know that it is a topic that has been brought up several times.
Right. And talking with Guy Stutz, he's trying to get operations people to come meet with you the next time they're on the island. Unfortunately, it couldn't come the time we last met because of the ferries and the problems getting out boats.
You know a lot of the stuff has to come to the HDC after it goes through here. Okay. Are there any questions from the board? Diane?
I have a question about the corrals.
Yes.
Is that before the new Stop and Shop went in, the old Stop and Shop put them out, and they were terrible, and they didn't work, and they were unsightly.
It's not going to be those, Diane. We already had told them that. They're coming to us for whatever it is.
But if I was just saying that perhaps we have to stick with what we've got rather than put in corrals.
They're going to be designed appropriately, and they're going to be coming to the HDC. We explained to them before their time all that horrible stuff they put in before. Anybody else have a question that's on?
What do you want?
Joe, you go?
No, he's good.
Mike, how are you doing, Mike?
Good. How are you?
Good. Since you don't have like a thing up on an easel or anything, can I ask you to come over here and look at something? Because I'm never going to be able to tell you. Like diverting, yeah. If you could, I can just show it to you. And I can barely see it myself. I didn't bring my glasses. I just got glasses. See this right here? That bump out?
Yep.
I know it can't happen this year, but this should be flush.
What are you talking about, Catherine?
The little, when you go out on the Pleasant from the, like, I guess I would say the west.
North side.
Northwest, you know. That bump out, I thought we were going to drop that down, make that flush. Oh, here we go. This one. Because when you take a right out of here, this is already a place where people want to just kind of glide right in, and they can't drive into these parking spaces without doing all the -- it's right in front of Dave Street. These spaces aren't good, aren't easy because of this. And at the same time, when the people pull out, you've got to go way out to turn right. You see what I'm saying? This is like an impediment to two things.
Just for Catherine, this is the eastern bump out on the Pleasant Street entrance.
Vehicles will be able to just pull right in. Like, poof, see you later. You know, and instead of all this backing up and everything else.
How do you feel about that, Andrew?
But not, I know that you can't do that now. That's a big, that's somewhat of a large project, but.
I think it would probably facilitate easier entrance into the on-street parking if it could be done and flush.
Will you include that as part of this modification, correct?
The only concern I have is if you're coming out and somebody's at this, on this sidewalk.
So what? It's plenty of room. It works. It will work. We did it over here. See how this is working now? It's unbelievable. I mean, this is like, that thing.
So you're saying do this?
Keep it there.
You're saying cut back on the sidewalk?
You've got to get rid of this part out into the, in the traveled way.
Right here, this would become a Belgium block flush.
I s -- oh, oh, oh.
That piece, yeah.
So it's not raised, so you can drive over it.
Okay.
You understand what we're saying?
And that way, the vehicles can just drive right in and park. It's bad enough we didn't move the poles and put everything underground.
Okay.
The only other thing is, I mean, as far as the corral things, I mean, I think they should only have two for this year. And they don't have any now, right?
Right. It's a huge parking lot.
You think they should go with three?
Yeah.
And take rid of the spaces?
Yeah. Because they're taking away the employees restricted, because they're empty all the time. So they're picking up the spaces that were before, not used by the public.
Where they ain't going to park.
I was going to.
They'll park wherever.
One time that I can, could the corrals go where the, where the bumpers are for the curbing, you know, it's sort of duinging at the end of the parking, that way you might have these spaces.
They're handicapped spaces for the center, and if they go the other way, they're too far away.
They should be near one bunch.
One at a time, please.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought he changed.
I mean, if you push, push it over to the, you know.
The trees, the trees.
Yeah.
They're too far away. They work, but they don't work.
Yeah, no, no, that's fine. It wasn't a big deal.
Anything else? Nat?
No, I'm good. That's fine. Forget the corral thing. Whatever they want. Just, I do. No, I'm fine. He brought over, he brought over the child version. I'm all set now. I got it.
Thank you.
I'm good. I got a pair. I just didn't bring it with me.
Beg pardon?
Is there any other questions about this?
I make a suggestion, being a handicapped person, that if you go there and you have to go to some distance to get the car, load your car, and then take it back so it's not left out in the thing, it would be good to have a, if you're going to have a corral, we approve them, some, near one of the handicapped islands.
Diane, it's closer for you to actually go right back to the front of the store.
I know, but I thought you, they weren't good to happen.
I would suggest that you just leave it in there, drive out and walk away. Just like, don't walk away.
Just leave the cart there?
Or just walk the 10 feet back to the front of the store. That's closer than actually going to one of these carts.
Well, that's why I was suggesting, perhaps thinking of the handicapped person, that it would be handy.
Actually, Diane, if you look at the one, I don't know if you can see it. Take the bigger one. There is one right behind the handicapped spaces there, and there's one right behind the handicapped spaces up next to the other entrance by the door.
And the front of the store that you usually go in is here?
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. I just don't like to do that.
Does anybody else have any comments? Somebody wanted to approve with the lowering of the curb on the east side of the Pleasant Street entrance, so it's a flush.
I'm going to do whatever it is.
Is that working?
Yep.
And Joe's made a second. Any through the discussion? All those in favor?
Madam Chair, and you're approving all the other?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
With that, okay. Great. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Okay. Anybody who's here, and I see a couple of you sitting here. We already did the A and Rs. We did all the A and Rs are ready, and we did all the secondary corners are ready, and we did tertiary corners are ready. So if anybody who's here from those who does not have to stay. Okay. Valero's, Lombardi's, Richmond, Boating Club, White Elephant have all been continued to April 11th. We're on page three now for us. The Brotherhood of Thieves has also been continued to April 11th. So now we are down to Surfside Road, 2115 46 Surfside Road LLC, representing the applicant. Did we move too fast for them? Anybody hear from those guys?
46?
Nope.
So they don't know.
Is this a Paul Simpkins?
Yeah.
Yeah.
He's on the boat trying to get back there. You have a doctor's appointment today?
Yeah, but Steve is the attorney for this.
Maybe we should hold this.
Hold on.
Well, I think the deadline's the 31st, our meeting's the 13th.
Yeah, we'll get a, they've been giving us extensions all along. Can somebody see if Steve Cohen is, Sarah, is Steve out in the hallway? Move too fast. Okay. We'll hold on to that one for a moment until somebody appears.
Madam Chairman, I believe they may have wanted a continuance, so maybe we could just hold this until later in the meeting.
Well, I just texted Steve. Hopefully, he'll text back. Modern technology is a great thing. We now have Arthur Reed, Peter Keiberg, Four Lovers Lane. I know you guys are here.
We wouldn't miss this for our life.
Yeah. Representing the applicant is?
Peter Keiberg. And we appreciate all the attention last meeting, the opportunity to appear so quickly at a meeting today. I'm sorry that I did not get you these plans until today, the stamped official plan, because it was kind of quick from last meeting, but we did get it done thanks to Haze Engineering. And we took the hint from the planning board and reduced the number of seats from 70 to 52, which was the number we picked because that allowed us to retain the most water-permeable surfaces in the parking lot, as indicated on the new plan.
Yeah, you guys want big plan? You can move the best one.
It's being passed out right now. That's the one I've plotted today.
You have the 11 by 17.
No, they're supposed to go.
No, a decision.
We reduced the seat.
Reduced from 70 to 52, which concomitantly reduced our parking, I believe, from 19, 25 to 19, which enabled us to show a lot more green space and also retain some of the gravel, water-permeable areas that were going to be paved over the way things looked last time. So we sort of accomplished a lot of things. Also provides, in our estimation, more of an opportunity for loading, because they'll just, and just traffic concerns alleviated, just going to be less cars. And while we don't have a designated loading zone, again, the loading will happen mostly in the morning. We have a loading area as designated, and I think, you know, and I communicated this on Friday in writing, to the extent that there may be, just because of the nature of the island, some loading that happens during business hours, we hope that that loading would occur as Mr. Lo had suspected last time, which is that the truck stops in Lover's, not in Lover's Lane, but on the Lover's Lane side of the premises, and we'll get hand-carded in anything we need during business hours. But like I said, I mean, you know, we expect that most of the activity with respect to loading will happen during the morning before there's any significant business that happens. We've also designated or flushed out the dumpster enclosure. I think there's like a small novel written in the lower left-hand corner of the plan describing it in great detail.
Some of this stuff will have to go to the HDC.
Clearly.
Andrew Leslie, anything to add? Or are you satisfied with this one now?
Satisfied.
Okay.
Joe?
Were you removing the pavement in the front? What's going to, what's going to place it?
Green. Green space. That's, that was the whole idea, is that that will also.
Okay, so the plantings, like Stephen?
Cool. Any questions down at that end of the table? John?
I'm just saying that the loading zone, I'm wondering, the, it's a loading area, and we talked about it last meeting. Just wondering if you could make that reference, so that you can use that as the loading area to start on that reference.
So it's flush with no curb?
Instead of having it raised to a, just make that stuff.
Yeah. What do you think about that?
It's mostly just a style.
Because it would just, it would just be flush with no curb, and that way it can drive over and drive back at it.
Yeah. Sounds good to me.
Okay. Good call. Anything else down at that end? Diane, Carl?
Do you have any, you do not need to use the gravel now that you're down to 52, and you're going to use it for drainage purposes, as the, you explained to us last week, that basically half and half goes, one half goes to Lover's Lane, one half goes down the hill.
Exactly.
So that'll help along with the green space down there at the end of it now that you're showing?
Exactly.
So it's half gravel, half lawn, brushes, shrubs?
That's right. And our, our plan was, while it's not an official drainage plan, and we still need to go to the, the water company, this, in our estimation, will have much less of a drainage issue than it, the way it was before.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions?
Do you anticipate getting a water quality certificate?
As soon as possible. As soon as we get a, an approval from here, or contingent approval, we'll run right over there and see what we're up against.
And it doesn't have to be released until it's in the office.
Okay.
Okay. I'm going to activate John and Carl on this one. If everybody's satisfied, you want to make a motion?
Do we have to close the public hearing?
Oh, yeah, we have to open the public hearing. Anybody else want to talk? We're just whipping through the rest of this thing. Seeing no public comment.
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
There's been a motion to close the public hearing in a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Carl?
Aye.
Okay.
Make a motion to approve with the changes, with the site plan changes, the parking changes, the 52, the front open space.
The flushing.
The dumpster, the flushing of the curb that John brought up.
On the rear of the building.
And that's it, I think.
We had, we had hours, which were, Peter?
Was it nine o'clock?
What are the hours?
Nine, right?
Well, it was kind of a mixed bag last meeting. I, I felt some resistance to the 10 o'clock at night, but then by the end of the meeting, I felt maybe not as much resistance. So I'm at the pleasure of the board, through you, Madam Chairman, you know, we'll go for 10. If you guys think that's too late, then we'll take 9.
I was fine with 10.
Carl? John?
Okay. That's fine.
Okay. Somebody make a motion to, and that's open to the public. Obviously, they're going to be there before and after. Somebody make a motion to approve?
Aye.
That was yours, and Joe, you seconded?
I seconded, yeah.
Any further discussion on the approval? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That was unanimous. Thanks.
Thank you very much.
We're going to back up now. Their representative has come in. I think we went too fast for you. So this is where we are right now, 46 Surfside Road. Is that, Steve, is that what you're here for?
There's an A and R, too.
I'm, I'm here for two, and I'm happy to do the Four Mill Hill Court, or Old Mill Court, whatever it's called now. But the 46 Surfside Road, we're actually waiting for Paul Santos to come on. He was on the 7 o'clock boat, and he'll be around 8.
We did make a, we did motion to hold it earlier, so we'll just hold it.
Yeah, if we could wait for Paul, that'd be great.
So where are we going back to?
There's an A and R that Barry needs to.
They're both public hearings right next to each other.
Which one is the A and R?
There's a public, there's one second.
There's a public hearing.
Second dwelling, that's it. Second dwelling, sorry.
Second drawing, yeah.
Oh, second dwelling. We didn't have enough to vote in favor of it, Barry.
What's that for?
It's rectorate. 78 Maticat Road. We had to hold it, because Joe has to recuse.
Okay.
So if we want to go back to that one?
Yep.
Take over?
Yeah, no problem. Thank you. Thank you for doing that.
The record reflect that Barry came at 7:13.
Yep. Okay, so we have one second dwelling requiring, which is William Rafferty at 78 Maticat Road. We've all had a chance to review it. Any questions? Motion of the board then at this point, or pleasure?
Motion to approve 78 Maticat Road.
And do I hear a second? Motion's on being seconded, discussion, hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have, unanimously. So.
We're all the way down to 46 Surfside Road, third page.
46 Surfside Road, sorry.
Oh, we're waiting, we're waiting.
I'm sorry, I think he said Mr. Santos, the date of clock for 46.
Seamus Crowley now.
The one right before that, Four Old Mill Court.
Yeah, I think, Steve, we got, it looks like we might have a few before that.
That's fine.
Okay, thank you.
No, those are all done, I think.
46 Nobody Farm's done, 11 North Water Street is none.
Wait a minute, where are you?
No.
Just help me to understand.
Previous plans.
Previous.
We did that. We did tertiary, did secondary, we did all of the A and Rs.
Got it.
Now, where at?
All the public hearings on the page two, Valero's down to White Elephant, including the White Elephant, are going over to April.
Got it.
Brotherhood is going over to April.
Got it.
We passed Surfside Road because they weren't here.
Got it.
We just did.
4415.
Four Lovers Lane, and now we're at Seamus Crowley.
There we go, okay.
North Mill Hill.
Is next, after, after those two.
Yeah.
Crowley, Lanterne, and North Mill.
Okay.
Yeah, just because he's got two.
I got a different list.
I got a different list.
No, it's the staff report versus the agenda.
Look at this.
Yeah, there's an updated, there's an updated staff. Yeah, sorry.
Okay.
So Mill Hill we're doing later?
Yes, and two, two more.
We'll cover it.
We've got Seamus Crowley, Lanterne, and then Mill Hill.
Sorry. All right. So that brings us to 61-15, Seamus M. Crowley and Elizabeth Gennaro at 46 Nobody Farm Road for the applicant. Hello.
Evening, Mr. Chairman. Rick Bodat for the applicant. You may remember in January, I think Bill Hunter was filling in for me here. I'm here with Arthur Gasparo as well. I believe the board discussed a number of items and some changes you wanted on the site plan. Art has made the changes.
I don't have the plan. I've got Pesci's, but I don't have the plan. When we have, Catherine, when things go forward, we've got to put the little baby plan back in.
Whenever it's submitted, that's most current.
Don't count on us bringing our packets from two months ago in here with us.
I think he was in there.
No, this is what you have. You have his letter. You have Pesci's. No, that's not it.
I probably have a reduced original.
No.
Plan.
Do you have one in your packet there, your little hand? Because we don't have anything here but Pesci's report.
I don't.
Yeah, well, we don't normally carry our packets forward, so when it's a site plan like this, we've got to have the little one attached again.
Hang on. You just may be.
It's not. I drew the packet. No?
I know.
Did you bring your other?
Can, can Art put it on the screen?
Yeah, that is, please. Thank you.
Yeah, I definitely need the.
Yeah, here we go.
Don't run away with these. February 1st?
Yeah, that's it. That's the one. Yeah.
Okay. So you said something changed?
Yeah, go over it if you'd like.
Yeah, so you have before you the revised site plan. It's, it's been reviewed by Mr. Pesci as well. Art's going to go through all the changes that were made.
But February 1st is the one that has all the changes on it?
That's correct.
Yes. It's supposed to be on the February.
The one we got snowed out and iced out.
Go ahead. Thank you, Art Gasparo, civil engineer and surveyor for the project. You may recall from the first hearing, as Rick said, that there were some comments, so we revised the site plan, and I'll just run through the revisions. The revisions were all directly related to, to the board comments. We added the location of Hanaby Lane on the opposite side of the Nobody Farm Road. Essentially, I could back up if you'd like. What I did was, existing conditions are on the top half of the plan, and proposed are on the bottom, just for clarity, so that you could sort of see what's there existing, and then what's, what's proposed. So just to, and I'm happy after I go over the revisions, to back up for anything that you may have for the project itself. We've added the location of Hanaby. I'm sorry?
Is this the correct one?
Does it say revised February 1st?
Yeah.
Does the plan date in the lower right-hand corner?
The, the, this date says January 5th.
It doesn't say revised February 1st below it?
It's not popping up.
See the stamp? The blue stamp?
Yeah, blue.
Thanks.
This is January 1st.
This one's correct. And this is the older plan.
Okay.
That's the older one.
That's fine. We don't need it.
Thanks. Thank you.
Thank you. Oh, yeah, that's my question.
And so the, the changes that are shown on the February 1st revision include the location of Hanaby Lane on the opposite side of Nobody Farm Road. Essentially, I could back up if you'd like. What I did was, existing conditions are on the top half of the plan, and proposed are on the bottom, just for clarity, so that you could sort of see what's there existing, and then what's, what's proposed. So just to, and I'm happy after I go over the revisions, to back up for anything that you may have for the project itself. We've added the location of Hanaby. I'm sorry?
Is this the correct one?
It doesn't say revised February first below it?
It's not popping up.
Thanks, Art.
This is January first.
And this is the older plan.
Okay.
That's the older one.
Thanks, thank you.
And so the, the changes that are shown on the February first revision include the location of Hanaby Lane on the opposite side of Nobody Farm Road, and then we added the sidewalk that exists on that road and the crosswalk going across Nobody Farm Road in a location such that it ties to that sidewalk. We modified, you may recall, that the applicant's voluntary to extend the multi-use path across the frontage of this property, and then we modified the design of that path such that the, um, uh, handicap access ramp essentially down would go to the crosswalk to go straight across to Hanaby Lane. The other changes that we made was that there was, um, some concern with the ability to back out of the site and having enough turning area, and a couple of board members, or at least one, mentioned that the, um, the front building could be reduced. So what we've done is we've removed the handicap ramp and a portion of the porch from the existing front structure, and then created a turnaround area which allowed backing into that space before you pull out onto Nobody Farm Road. We've added a sign, uh, based on a, a, a very helpful staff recommendation when we met to do the plan, so that, and I've added that, this, that that space would be signed, no parking, such that then, you know, uh, somebody from the site could back into there and then pull out onto Nobody Farm Road. Um, we did receive a sign-off from Mr. Pesci, which, um, I'm not sure the staff report had been updated, but that letter is in, in your packet, and, um, we also received a letter of water quality certificate from Mr. Gardner. So as far as we know, we believe we've addressed all, all comments that were made by the board at the last meeting, and as well as received the necessary, uh, sign-offs from, as I say, Mr. Pesci and Mr. Gardner. Uh, with that, uh, we'd be happy to address any further questions, concerns, or comments that you may have with this pending application.
Great, board members, any questions?
Yes, I'm also.
We all good? Do you have anything, Andrew?
Okay, good.
So ladies and gentlemen, this is a public hearing, if anyone would like to comment on this. Seeing no comments.
Motion to close the public hearing.
Do we hear a second? Yes, motion's now made in second for discussion. Um, and before I do that, let me see, this is... Special permit isn't, I'm so sorry. Yeah, so who hasn't said yet?
Diane hasn't said.
Diane, I need to activate you for this one, dear.
All right.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Thank you. So, you've heard the motion of the board to close the public hearing, that's been made in second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Those opposed, ayes have unanimously.
Thank you very much.
Whoop, hang on. We've got one more stage, this is the big one.
Okay.
The pleasure of the board.
All right, can I ask staff through the chair if there are any conditions, Andrew, we need to include in this?
I, there's no conditions that have been brought up.
Okay. Just checking.
Holly, we're good?
Yeah, just referencing Ed's comments, make sure that these comments are included within the regulations.
Yes.
Okay, good.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
That motion's now made in second of discussion, hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have unanimously.
Thank you again.
I have Brass Lantern.
Yes, ma'am.
Catherine needs that one back, Catherine. They're down there.
There we go. All right, so the next thing before us is zero seven one six Brass Lantern LLC, um, eleven North Water Street for the applicant. Hi.
Sarah Alger for the applicant.
How are you?
Good, thank you. Um, Mr. Santos is not able to be here, but I will forge ahead.
Okay.
Mr. Santos? I know, but I'll forge ahead because I don't think you want to have your whole agenda hanging out till he gets here after eight o'clock.
Yes, at your discretion, Miss Sarah.
That is the plan, I'm gonna hand you these smaller packets.
Thank you.
So also with me tonight is, um, the principal, Michelle Langlois, who's here to answer any questions and, um, make any comments that you might have. The application here is, um, to alter and extend the existing guest house on, um, North Water Street, going to demolish a portion of the existing structure, construct an addition, reconfigure, and, um, kind of rejigger some of the rooms, increasing the number from seven to seven, um, from seventeen to twenty-four, adding a one-bedroom manager's apartment with kitchen and a commercial kitchen. Now, just as a note, that commercial kitchen is just to prepare food for the in-residence, it's not intended and will not be a public restaurant. Um, in fact, the idea really is just to be able to provide some, some breakfast. Right now, um, they can't even boil a hard-boiled egg for their guests without upgrading the kitchen, so they would like to be able to do that. Um, so as, at the end of this whole project, we're gonna have twenty-four guest rooms, a one-bedroom manager's apartment, the three, uh, three-staff sleeping rooms, um, which also have a kitchen and a commercial kitchen that staff sleeping room currently exists. The structure itself is non-conforming as to height, having a height of about thirty-four feet, nothing there is going to change. Um, we are providing two stacked, um, spaces that will provide a space, um, for people to load and unload, um, at the site, and as you'll see on the chart, thirteen spaces are technically required. Because we are within a quarter mile of the CDT under the bylaw, we are allowed to have, um, an inn now by special permit under the bylaw change that went through a year or so ago. The, um, project will meet required ground, um, cover and open space, will have open space of thirty-four percent. I think that's really all I can tell you.
Okay.
Board members, any questions?
About the restaurant part?
Yeah, there's not gonna be a restaurant.
It's never gonna get modified for a restaurant or anything?
No.
It's not gonna come in for modification later on?
No, she does not want to run, it's not even being built for, there isn't even really a restaurant space, there's like a little breakfast area in the inn, but no. No, it wouldn't be, and it wouldn't be appropriate in this location because we're in the residential old historic, a restaurant would not even be a permitted use, whereas in the CDT, restaurants are permitted. This remain, this does remain in the residential old historic district, and she's not looking to increase the commercialization of North Water Street just to increase the capacity for guests at the inn and also give herself the opportunity to provide something other than cold cereal.
Joe, can I make a comment just to clear that up? Okay, like, Union Street Inn, they have a commercial stove. The word kitchen is used to, like, sounds big, but if you have one thirty-inch commercial, thirty-six inch commercial range today, with the codes the way they have now, you might as well have twenty stoves, 'cause you gotta do the same thing as if you were a restaurant, so that's why it, it, that's why they, they can't just slap in a stove and stop making muffins, like, with a project that is new. They do it all the time, but project, places that are already existing. So it's just, that's why it's like that now.
Okay.
No, no liquor license either, no, nothing like that.
You know, the only thing I noticed is that the, uh, curbing has to be aligned with the parking, I'm sure that was gonna happen, you know?
Right. Correct. That's correct.
Okay, anything else? Anyone else? Nope, 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 go ahead, Carl.
This is a question through you, Sarah, to the owner, or for you as well, um, do you actively promote your guests not to bring their cars?
Yes.
Yes.
Discourage people from bringing their cars. We actually offer discounted fast-ferried tickets, um, so they'll leave their car over in Hyannis, um, and we promote the bike paths and bike rentals and central location and, um, and the high cost of bringing a car over to Nantucket, it kind of, it kind of is the clincher.
Okay, thank you, um, and the other question I had was, do we need to get into hours of operation at all for this kitchens or kitchen?
Well, we're not having a restaurant, it's, it's really, I think, Michelle, maybe you could just go to the mic and just say, give a, a little outline of what you intend to do with.
But, go ahead.
Um, currently we serve breakfast between eight and ten o'clock in the morning, we start preparing breakfast at around seven o'clock, and by eleven o'clock, we close down. In the afternoon, we bake cookies, and that takes an hour in the kitchen, and that's about it.
Thank you.
Okay.
Great, thanks, anyone else? Oh, no? Do you have something? No?
Can I ask one question? On the, on the condensers, the, the air conditioning? I'm not sure, I know that this has come up in some other projects where they're in the setback. Is, uh, is this location, that's, is this new, are the condensers new in this location?
They would be new, yes.
They'd be new, okay.
Just make sure they're five feet.
I'm not sure if that one on the, I, I think you should check that, whether they...
Okay, and make sure that they meet the five foot.
Yeah.
If they're, if they're not, that will create a problem.
Okay.
The HCC hasn't seen them yet, either.
No, they're just sketched in there, I don't think there's any finesse to it.
Right, okay.
Ms. Chairman, just, it appears, is there, it looks like there is a fence on that side of the property?
There is, yes, on the, on the north side, yes.
Great, thank you.
Y'all set? Anyone else on the board? Ladies and gentlemen, this is a public hearing, so if anyone would like to comment on this?
Yeah, first of all, can you see a concept? I don't see a building.
There's this, sorry, I, I'm not as good as Paul is at the diesel.
Concept, so.
And, uh, can I ask what the...
Just do me a favor, please, could you just identify yourself?
George Butterworth. George Butterworth?
And your address, please.
Twenty-three North Water.
Thank you, sir.
Um, can I ask what the, uh, ground coverage is on this? Percentage of the lot?
Sarah?
Um, let's see, proposed ground cover forty-nine point six percent.
Okay.
Correct.
And, uh, I was curious about exhaust fans and for the commercial kitchen and where that might be located?
We're not, we're not really doing that kind of a kitchen with that kind of exhaust fan, um... This is a pretty low-key scenario, but... On the interior, on the...
Yeah, yeah, on the east side.
East side.
Go ahead.
And, um, right now, they're, they're saying breakfast and cooking cookies, but is there anything restrictions that would prevent them from serving lunch or dinner as well as breakfast on this plan?
There's a health code requirement for B and Bs.
You can restrict it, too, we don't, you can put that in our permit.
There's a huge, there's a huge requirement for a full-service kitchen, as opposed to a B and B.
Right.
And I've seen their kitchen, right now they meet it. If they were to go to lunch and dinner, like the Union Street Inn, because the Union Street Inn needed a ZBA permit to put that kitchen in there, it's a humongous, three-bay sinks, the whole nine yards.
So there's different levels of commercial kitchens?
There's service.
Okay.
Well, in any case, we're happy to say that we're just serving to, to our guests, and we're happy to say that we're cooking cookies and serving breakfast. Lunch and dinner is not in the plan.
Okay.
All right, thank you, and if there's any chance that the air, the air conditioning units would not be right up against the property line toward the residential property to the north, I, I'm surprised Malcolm's not here tonight, I know he showed up last week, but I don't see him here today, that's where his house is, it's just, if there's any chance they could be on the other side toward the more commercial side or...
We can, we can work with the HDC to try to find a, a good place for those.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay.
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
And do I hear a second?
Second.
Discussion. And by the way, um, let me see, who was up?
Diane.
Diane already did hers.
Then it would be Carl.
Okay. Carl, you're gonna be up for this one.
And then John.
And then John, there you go. Okay, so that motion was made in second of discussion, hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have unanimously, and the pleasure of the board.
I'll make a motion to approve, um, Andrew, are we approving a site plan along with this, outside of the AC units?
Yes, you are, it's part of it.
Okay, so it, I, uh, make a motion to approve with the kitchen to serve just guests, um, breakfast and snacks, and, um, the driveway to line up with the parking. Um, and not tying the AC units to that location.
Second.
Does that work, Andrew?
Yep.
Okay, so that motion's now made in second of discussion on the issue. Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have unanimously, great, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Next thing before us is seven nine one seven, which is Fort North Mill Court LLC, eleven Mill Hill. Mr. Cohen was floating around.
Is Steve out in the hallway? No, he's right there.
Oh, there he is, hi, Steve.
Are you still waiting for Paul?
You don't need him for this one, okay.
Okay, I think this is relatively simple and hopefully it will, can be quick. The zoning setback in this area is five feet, for some reason, the planning board added a ten-foot vegetated buffer to this, to these lots. I, I didn't say there wasn't, Linda, let me?
All right, let's let him finish first before we go back and forth, please.
And these lots abut a forest, so it's not quite clear to my client, although there are some reasons why this might be beneficial, but what I'd like to suggest is an alternative that would be as beneficial or, or potentially more beneficial to the, to the board, uh, which is that what my client is, would like to do is develop this land, and as he's, because of the trapezoidal shape of his lot, it's actually somewhat hard to do a house and a cottage here without encroaching into this ten-foot buffer instead of the five, instead of the five-foot setback, um, that's allowed by zoning. And what we'd like to propose instead is that instead of having this ten-foot no disturbe of essentially, uh, scrub oaks and half-dead cedars, is that in anywhere where my client would, had any structure or disturbance between the five-foot setback and the ten-foot buffer, that we, uh, have, uh, a substantial and dense evergreen screening, which would provide of, uh, you know, within the five-foot setback, which would provide the same visual buffer, uh, or better than what's there now, and still allow my client to develop the property within zoning.
Yeah, ahead.
Okay. Considering the only thing that's been approved on this lot is the main house, this pool that's paved over most of the yard, and this cabana cottage in the back have not been approved.
By the HDC, correct.
Yeah, there's absolutely no reason on a vacant lot with a house that's been pulled up towards the front, that you can't redesign this pool and this massive hardscape around the pool and redesign the cottage so they don't have to go into the ten-foot vegetated buffer, and if you recall, I was concerned about it backing up to the sledding hill and various other town properties over there, walking paths, things like that.
It's not near the sledding at all.
Wait. And I wanted that ten-foot buffer to go along the entire length, which was like four or five lots. They managed to back me off that and put the ten-foot buffer down in that corner, around that side and down, I guess on the west side, I don't know what, there's no cardinal point on this, down in the V, where it angles off, at the bottom of the trapezoid. I get my ten-foot down one side and ten-foot up the other side, or I think I only got the ten-foot on that one side, actually. There isn't any reason why this can't be redesigned or made smaller, not the house itself, this massive pool deck, the pool, and the cottage. You have nothing in that yard that's going to compel me to get rid of the ten-foot buffer zone.
The...
From the sledding hill.
Right, the application was filed in, in advance of the HDC permitting, the house is currently approved, the pool is proposed, the cottage is proposed, but it, it, sort of regardless of, of where we are at the HDC permitting process, uh, you know, frankly, I failed to see the benefit of a ten-foot no disturb buffer of some scrub oak, but would love to see, uh, real screening if that's what the commission wants. Um, if the, if the intent here is to provide a visual buffer between development and nature, then let's put it in an actual buffer that, that blocks it. That's, that's my proposal, that, that the setback, a five-foot setback be maintained, but there be a requirement for, for a real buffer.
And you have the pool platform, whatever it is, going right up to five feet?
No, that's the ten.
Nope.
On the platform, yeah.
That goes right up to the five, the building goes right up to the five, and neither of which have been approved or on the plan yet.
Right, and I'm...
So I'm not, I'm not budging, Steve, I got that ten feet, so everything is pulled away from the sledding hill and all the trail that goes around up there.
Right, but it's not near the sledding hill, Linda, I think that was a mistake that got us into this situation in the first place, is a misunderstanding of where the sledding hill is in relation to this land, it's, it's just not next to it.
It's right here. That is not way over, when all of this is removed.
It's way over when you consider five feet of scrub oak, what's the difference when they're not even near each other?
Steve, I backed off the other four or five lots, I can't remember how many, that I wanted it to run the entire length between that, the cemetery, and everything else. I was left with just that one little strip in that corner, and I'm not budging off of it, because you can redesign this whole mess with a different footprint.
We, we, that plan is not approved by the HDC, it will, it will be...
You're right.
It will be, it, it is, we are not asking permission from the planning board to build what's shown in that plan, that is a proposal, a concept plan, for you to understand what the lot looks like and what potential development looks like.
I'm well aware of that, I'm not an idiot, however, there's no reason to design something that's in the ten-foot buffer, period, I don't care what you're showing me.
I, I just don't understand what a ten-foot buffer does here when a five, when the setback normally is five feet.
Well, I'm not budging, so move on to somebody else.
The, the problem with a ten-foot buffer is it actually requires more, because it really increases your setback to fifteen feet, because if you have a no disturb of ten feet, and then you have to leave room to get by, you know, you, you end up to thirteen, fourteen, fifteen feet, uh, before you can have a structure.
All right, anyone else on the board? Di?
Uh, this is next to the town sledding and whatever, and if you have a five-foot setback, and then the house, this, the house is going to hang over where the park is, where Mill Hill Park is, and the purpose of at least the ten-foot setback was to move the house back out so that the park remained a park, it's not surrounded by buildings, and this is edging right up to it, five feet is not a very long distance. right up to it. Five feet is not a very long distance between the park and the building. And scrub oak or whatever, in order to make a suitable wall between the two, you'd have to have, you know, 20-foot high building is how high. I think the park should be left as it is and not
Right.
surrounded by buildings.
Steve, I'm sorry, I don't mean to interrupt, but there seems to be, you've said this isn't next to the park. You may want to just take a moment and show the board exactly where the lot is in relation to the park. Could you just do that? Humor me for a minute. No, I'm just saying, that's, it's a corner. Let him do his thing.
This is your lot.
This is the park.
But there's at least, whatever that width is, it's probably 50 feet.
Yeah, I'm familiar with it.
This is the sledding here. So you've got an area that's twice as wide, or at least 50% wider than the whole lot itself, that's screening. So I don't know that what five-foot really does. If you see, this is the sledding here. So this is huge.
The rest of it up here is park.
Yep, go ahead. I'm sorry, Steve, thank you for doing that. Did you want to finish off? I'm sorry. I didn't mean to interrupt your train of thought, but I appreciate you.
No, just, if the concept is whether or not you're gonna have a building visible from the park, five feet is essentially nothing. It doesn't, it doesn't change that impact. You know, the, if a building is five foot back, when it, you're probably, I don't know, 60, 80, 90 feet away to begin with, you know, it's the whole width of the lot. What's, it's a huge impact on my client, and almost no noticeable impact on the visibility of the building moving at five feet.
Okay, thank you. Andrew, please go right ahead.
Mr. Chairman, I just think, I do agree with what Mr. Cohen is saying. It is not directly on that, on that area at all. I just have a question, though. Would...
Please.
Mr. Cohen, would your client agree to do additional landscaping off the site? So for example, if it were reduced on the site, you know, there may be opportunities to fill in bald spots or whatever on the park property itself?
If that was the condition of the permit, I think he would accept that.
Yes, we most certainly can. We would, the town would have to accept the plantings as a gift. We've done it many, many times.
No different than a bike path or anything else?
I mean, the only thing that we don't have is any sort of landscaping plan which might identify the most advantageous places to put that, and what kind of trees and other... I mean, again, I think if, I understand the reasoning behind it, but I think if there's as an effective way to do it, which might be to introduce other plants, again, on the, you know, in the very large area that exists between the sledding hill and the property line, and they're willing to do that.
You know, I'm not pre-authorized to accept that, but it certainly sounds reasonable. It's consistent with what the planning board does in other situations, and, you know, I'd be happy to present that choice to my client, and we could come up with a plan. I think that, I don't know if you'd want to have it through staff or through the DPW or whatever you thought was the right way to come up with the location. I know, you know, I know.
Well, I mean, I'd like to see some sort of a landscaping plan and analysis of what, you know, with the recommendation of specific plants, where they would go, what their impact might be, that the board could take a look at, so.
And I don't think that's such a bad idea to just wait that time period between now and our next meeting, if we're gonna do that so that your client's aware of what they're gonna get into as well, too, you know, as opposed to just blessing staff to do it. We're all on the same page at that point if you're gonna, if you want to do it that way. Just hold on for one second.
Well, I guess what, there's a timing issue here, too, so it would be great if we could have some concept, if this, if the board is, if that concept is acceptable to the board, you know, that would be helpful to know.
Can I ask a question? It's on the topic. Did you look at adjusting the lot lines? No, 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 not that line. If you moved the real lot lines of 13 and 14.
Well, my client only owns one.
They're all sold?
They're sold, yeah.
They're becoming sold. It's just like every other one.
Go ahead.
Andrew, Andrew, I couldn't, I didn't remember this, but I'm looking, reading this recommendation again, and it says that somebody before you already tried to get out of that 10-foot buffer and was totally unsuccessful? Does that give you any indication?
It does. Mr. Bodett, who is here, represented the seller, and during the, during the course of the sale of the property, I requested Mr. Bodett seek a release from that. That release was requested essentially for my client, but granted for other lots, but not my client's lot. And now I'm back as a glutton for punishment, seeking not to eliminate the requirement, but to better serve the purpose of the requirement.
Mr. Cohen, let me put it through a different filter, maybe not a glutton for punishment, but we certainly think have arrived at a much more novel concept about maybe something else we can do for the area that, as one board member, doesn't sound halfway, you know, I'm kind of intrigued by it, actually, you know, especially when staff identifies issues like that. So I probably don't feel like the glutton for punishment. This is admirable. I think that, you know, we're seeing a different way maybe to tackle some issues here and still arrive at the same, even arrive at a slightly better way of dealing with things.
Yeah, I think if we can address the board's goal, if, you know, accommodate my client's desire to develop this property, but also maintain the public's sort of serenity in the park, that a 10-foot, this no disturb zone isn't necessarily the only way to do that. In fact, I don't think it's the best way to do that. So if the board is willing to work with us on that, I would appreciate that.
As one member, it'd be fine letting staff, letting, if staff is comfortable with the concept of working with the applicant, I mean, I'm willing to move forward at this point, but if you're not, if you're feeling like you want to get a landscape plan before some stuff, it's...
Yeah, I think, if we, we could go to the 17th, and I'm, and I think, you know, in general, just for some general numbers here.
Yep.
So there's basically 137 feet along that boundary, you know, so if, so basically, if we were looking for roughly, you know, the same area, so 1,370 feet somewhere within that park area that has additional landscaping, and then are we talking about some sort of clear, like a hedge or something that you're going to plant on your own property?
My client would anticipate planting a hedge. At least if there's a pool, there's gonna have to be at least a four-foot pool fence there that would be blocked by a hedge. I think he'd like to have at least something like that, but that's not gonna block a building.
So, so if, but there would be a clear separation between the lot and the park?
Yeah.
Sorry, through you, Mr. Chairman.
No, please, I'm listening.
And, and that, then somewhere on the, on the, on the town's property, if, you know, the strategic placement of trees and other things could be sort of planned out, I guess the question is, can you get a landscape designer, you know, to at least take an initial look at this so the board could get something for the 17th?
Yeah, I, you know, can I get you a landscape plan in 10 days? No.
No, I'm not saying, I know that.
Can we, can I get my client to confirm the concept and get somebody out there to take a look and figure out, you know, how many trees and where would they likely go? We can get you something. I think what we could likely do is get enough for the board to feel comfortable delegating it to a staff approval. Is that...
I'm with Linda. I want, I don't even want to do it.
Okay.
But, I mean, it's something tremendously beneficial to the town, you know, it's gonna be a pretty interesting landscape plan to get my...
Well, Mr. Chairman, can I respond to that? I don't think that that buffer is of tremendous benefit to the town if it doesn't work. And I think that, you know, if something better and more effective could be done in that area, I'm surprised that you don't want to at least take a look at it.
Oh, no, take a look at it. Let's take a look.
And I think that's what we should do, and if you're not satisfied, fine, but I don't think...
No, I thought we were headed towards proceeding.
Tonight? No.
No.
No, no. I think, I think what I'd like to do is come back on the 17th with enough information for the board to potentially feel comfortable that they could, they could give an approval with a, and delegate a concept to be approved with a more formal landscape plan, which would obviously take more time, but that that approval could be through staff, but you would know going in, okay, this is generally where the bare spots are, and this is the kind of trees that we could provide, but there's no way that would happen in 10 days, that, that detail kind of a plan.
Right, I think there would be...
But I think we can get you the concept.
And, Mr. Chairman, there would be minimum numbers of species, and there would be some, at least some rough estimates, so you could cost it out. Wouldn't be, you know, totally, and, and, you know, I think that the staff would probably be the town arborist or, you know, someone that's gonna oversee the maintenance there.
It's not a straight line. They're staggered. When you plant cedars, they're not like straight lines. They're staggered.
Right, yeah. I think my client doesn't really want a row of, you know, hedge-looking things either, but I think that Andrew's idea of adding density to the existing trees is a really good one. Now, something naturalistic rather than planting a row of them.
Yeah, go ahead, Carl.
Just want to make a suggestion for the record. I walked through there extensively in the past many times, and there's a pretty serious erosion problem down from the bench headed toward the sledding hill. Perhaps the town could work out a deal to fix that a little bit up through you, Mr. Chairman, to Andrew. That might be an idea, along with some trees. Are you familiar with that, Mr. La?
I'm not.
It's opposite, the sledding hill goes up toward the, there's a bench, it's about 15 to 20 feet, and it's very, there's like a gully there.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, if...
And that could be repaired as a part of the deal.
If the board wanted to reduce it to just a gift for landscaping of the park, we could do that, too. I mean, the concept from a legal point of view is the same.
The other question I had was, how big is the buffer zone? Does it cover the entire perimeter of this development?
Just that one side.
Just the east side?
Yeah.
Okay. I don't really personally have an opinion about five feet versus 10 feet, but I think there are some definite areas in that park area that need to be fixed. Thank you.
Anyone else on the board? None, it's okay. No, I just, it's, I think Andrew and you are kind of on the right track, because I don't really see the town making that investment into the future. So...
Not likely.
To get, to, for five feet, I have to agree. I'd rather see some positive things happen for the benefit of that town and the area, to really make some things work. So you, I'm for it.
Okay.
In that sense. I just, the only question I have for my board is, did you need to see the full-scale plan, which is gonna take him more than 10 days? Are you kind of good with a general overview of what needs to happen? Bring that forward on the 17th and let staff and the applicant work it from there.
I don't know. It depends on how loosey-goosey it is on the 17th. If it's a little bit more nailed down, you've spoken to the town, you have an idea of what kind of it is, all that stuff.
Yeah, we can, we can definitely get you good information by then, I hope, but we'd never get like a real formal landscaping plan in that time. But I think we can, you know, get you something that you'll feel comfortable with.
And that you've gotten a, a sort of a, you had a conversation with Linda.
Yeah, I haven't seen the town turn down free trees yet.
True. You never know.
True, but I think there's, there's a few things that could happen in that area.
Right.
So I, you know, I understand the, always a question of whether the town will accept the gift or not, but I think there's a few things.
Right. Well, and the planning board certainly could make the relief contingent on the accept, the acceptance of the gift by the town and the, you know, whatever.
You can't make any planning or contingent on an action by the board.
Well, I'll do, I'll do my homework before the next meeting.
I'm sure you will. Is there anything else on the board at this point or from staff? This is a public hearing, so if someone would like to comment, aye.
Hi. Hi, I'm Annie Mendelson. I'm not in a butter. I live on Crooked Lane.
Okay.
But I enjoy the park. I'm concerned by Mr. Cohen's description of a no-touch zone of 10 feet, because in your approval of a definitive subdivision plan on page four, item, paragraph 12, it calls for a densely vegetative buffer to be established and permanently maintained along the eastern limit, and the restriction shall be included in future deeds and included within legal documents. The applicant, I assume it's not the developer purchased the property knowing this restriction was on it. It's part of the agreement for the subdivision, and I, I am saddened that you're thinking of backing down from some of the constrictions that, requirements that you put on a subdivision in the beginning. It seems like they're just being whittled away. My reason for having this retained is first, a 10-foot vegetative buffer is appropriate and compatible with the neighboring Mill Hill Park. It is a living screen that will help minimize the impact that the development will have on the park. Second, there is a dramatic change in elevation along the development's eastern border, from the top of the development to the bottom, going north to south, there's a 20-foot drop, and this property has a 10-foot drop. They're talking about putting in a flat pool with a big flat area across that drop, and I, I think that a 10-foot vegetative buffer is necessary to stabilize the soil and prevent erosion. And when you talk about planting additional trees, well, that sounds really sweet, like a gift, but in some people's mind, it sounds like encroachment. Since there's no person defending that border, it's a public area and it's a town area, I hope that this, this board will retain the conditions and requirements as stated on the approval for, of a definitive subdivision plan. Okay, thanks.
Thank you very much. We appreciate it. Would anyone else like to comment on this? Not seeing anything else.
I'll make a motion to continue to the 17th of March.
Do I hear a second? Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, eyes have unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
So that brings us to 0916, which is the Sanford Boat Building condominium. This is an amendment to the Nulli Day LLC, 2C Sanford Road, Unit 6.
Good to see you again.
Lift it. Skip, put it all the way up. Put it all the way up, because it won't catch you.
Okay, basically...
Can you identify yourself for the record?
Basically, we just, we bought...
Can you identify yourself for the record, sir, please?
Skip Cavett.
Thank you.
We bought the old camera shop next to the taco place, and we just want to make it a little bit bigger, and we plan on blowing a hole in the wall, 12 foot eight, and moving the tables inside, and basically, that's it. And we're gonna build a handicap bathroom in the, in the new place, and no, you know, no change of hours, no nothing, but while I'm here, I would like to request a dumpster.
Where?
I think that's the most important thing I need right now, is a dumpster.
Where? Over on the side?
Anyplace. I don't care, anyplace. Just tell me where...
You don't have anywhere to put it, except where he's got the trash barrels right now.
I know, but that's, that's not big enough, Linda.
Where are you gonna put it?
I went through, I went through the whole summer without a dumpster, because you wouldn't let us have one.
But you can't put it in front of the building.
Well, it's a restaurant, and I need a dumpster. So wherever, wherever, you know, wherever you want me to put it, I'll put it. I'll landscape it, whatever you want.
Well, you're gonna have to go to the HDC for it also.
So as the applicant, what are you suggesting you'd like to put it?
Wherever you want.
I'm just, I'm just... Well, I mean, you've... Well, I mean, you've, you've certainly given it thought, so where do you, you know, so help me out a little bit here.
Okay, we put one down by, right in front of the, the trashcan area.
Uh huh.
Last summer, and the neighbors complained, so I had to take it out.
Okay. So I.
I'm sorry.
You've also got, you've also got parking that's spread out among all the units in the building.
Right.
You can't put it in one of their parking spaces.
Right.
Well, I'm just telling you, it's a restaurant, I need a, I need a dumpster.
You do need a dumpster.
Very badly.
And, and as the applicant, we expect you to kinda come forward with a proposal, as opposed to thrusting it on the board, if I need one, you guys figure out where it goes, so.
Okay, well, I suggest just putting one in a parking space, then.
That's a different, Andrew, that's a totally different requirement.
I mean, I guess I'm asking you guys where you want me to put it.
I'd have to go over there with you and look at it.
That's, that would be great.
Can I make a suggestion, Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, hold on, hold on for one second. Go ahead.
Through you, Mr. Chairman, to the applicant, can you get together with your fellow condo owners and revamp the trashcan area and make it a dumpster?
Seventeenth.
We can put this to the seventeenth, guys, and I'll meet you over there, and we'll figure out where the hell to put it.
Just a suggestion.
'Cause I had to meet Alan over there with some other stuff on that side of the building before.
Yeah, that's, that's fine. I mean, postpone the whole thing, or can we just put the dumpster till the seventeenth?
No, it would have to be the application.
It's all in one application, you can't split it up.
Yep.
I mean, the, the rest, the rest of the plan is pretty straightforward, I mean, I just, the dumpster was something that came to my mind, because it was very difficult to run a restaurant in the summertime, with just throwing it in a truck every day.
Well, there's no reason for you to reapply, which is why we're saying, hang on to the seventeenth, it's only next week.
Yeah, that's, that's okay.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, go ahead, Di.
Through you, the staff, or through the staff, they want to know if you're going to have a separate cash register for the sandwich unit?
No. First of all, it's not a sandwich shop. I, I know that's what it says on there, and I don't know who told you it's gonna be a sandwich shop. It's, it's, I, I know, I, I saw that, it's just an extension. It's just gonna be the, it's, it's just gonna make the taco place bigger, that's it.
Okay, so, there's no parking?
No.
Thing coming up?
No.
Here, I'll take my cellphone. Hand him my cellphone.
Oh.
Because ACC is gonna have to get. It says right there.
Skip, where'd you go? It says.
And, do me a favor, this is.
The handicap.
No, it says sandwich shop, so that's why they.
That was probably one of our crazy plans, but it's, it's all, it's gonna be the exact same restaurant.
Okay, so.
Just making it bigger, that's all.
Yeah, so you'll revise that plan as well, too, so it doesn't really say that anymore, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'll cross the sandwich shop.
Well, he's gotta come in BIC's license.
Right.
I don't care what you serve there.
Would there, please, Mr. Chairman, would there be a possibility of just a preferred because the handicap is hard to do, if you're a senior, if you share the common, the dumpster area that they have, or they have a regular, more regular pickup galley instead of maybe what they have?
That would be great.
That wouldn't be great.
Well, I think that, that's something that needs to be worked out between now and our next meeting. Whatever, whatever the answer is, I think that's something that we clearly need to have laid out by our next meeting, with some more definitive concept of what's gonna happen here.
Does, you wanna ask if anybody has a problem with the concept of expanding? I don't.
Not hearing anything from the board at this point.
Ma'am, I just don't know how to tell them when to put a dumpster.
It's a nice operation.
Well, that's, again, again, it's, it's not always up to this, we kind of really need to expect the applicant to.
All right, we've got this under control.
Is this one of these mid-island?
You've got it, you've got.
Old, old mid-island problems.
They'll come back on the seventeenth with a, with a proposal.
Right.
So, so I'll meet with, I'll meet with Linda?
Just call me.
Okay.
But before we do that, is there anything from staff that needs to be.
We gotta go to the seventeenth for this, too?
Yeah, but, all right, can, can we?
No, 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 I'm just asking, is that?
Yeah, we're gonna go to the seventeenth, but let me just check in here at the appropriate points.
Okay, so.
So, please.
Mr. Chairman, I think we need a little bit clearer site plans.
Okay.
Or, or, well, excuse me, floor plans, and then for the site plan, you know, while he may want to put in a dumpster, and while it may be necessary, I mean, this is a condo building, so we would need information about the master deed and where he actually has rights to put a dumpster, before the planning board should talk about any locations.
Uh huh.
Yeah, I guess that would be the, Alan would tell us that, you know, he owns the building.
Okay. Hold on, let me just make sure, is that it, Leslie, or was there anything else? Or Andrew?
No, that's it for right now.
Okay, great. All right. This is a public hearing, ladies and gentlemen, if anyone would like to comment on this.
Motion to continue to March seventeenth.
Second.
Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have unanimously, great.
And just a technical question, Catherine, do we actually motion to go to the seventeenth with Mill Hill, or do we just continue it without going someplace?
No, we made a motion.
Okay, with, to the seventeenth.
Four to zero.
Okay.
Correct. Okay, great.
Good, thanks.
Thank you. Next thing before us is eleven dash sixteen, which is Nantucket Island Resorts LLC, sixteen Cynthia Lane. Mr. Bodett? Hi.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, good evening. Rick Bodett for the applicant, Nantucket Island Resorts. Before you tonight is a special permit request. For sixteen Cynthia Lane, we're seeking to change the use from just a simple residential duplex to neighborhood employee housing for up to twelve employees. The property is in the R-five zoning district. As I said, it's a duplex, there are three bedrooms on each side of the duplex. Nantucket Island Resorts is under contract to purchase the building, and to purchase both sides of the building. It is currently set up as a condo, but they're gonna maintain both sides. We did submit a site plan that shows the, the parking on the site. We're proposing to have six parking spaces. There's one parking space required per each bedroom in a duplex. There are six bedrooms, so there's. I don't, I don't think there's a requirement specific to it.
Can, can we let the applicant finish before we, please?
Thank you.
Go ahead.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We have two, two spaces that you'll see are stacked there, and one is a seven by seventeen, the reduced size. All that parking is provided on site. We have submitted a, a management plan that I, I think you probably have, I'm not sure, but I did submit it late, I submitted it on Friday. It does have a number of standard conditions that we put together, you know, screening the, the parking areas, that we'll provide trash service, no exterior storage, no overnight guests, no more cars in spaces. We propose to provide a bike rack for the employees, and we also propose to have their, their housing manager manage the building and have his name and number on file with the board, the neighbors, as well as the Nantucket Police Department. I believe he manages a number of their employee housing sites, and I think that everybody has his number anyway already, so we are, point is, we're not proposing for him to live on site. I did see a comment in the staff report, a question about whether there are any of these, any other of these units within a thousand feet, foot radius in the zoning district, and I've checked it out, there is one, it's right on Cynthia. I haven't found any other ones that are permitted. I think the one on Cynthia is a dormitory, it's probably, I think it's pre-existing non-conforming, it was granted by the zoning board a number of years ago. Where? I didn't see it permitted. I mean, I, I looked around, I didn't, I mean, you know, I guess, well, let me say this, I didn't do a full title report of every property within a thousand-foot radius of this property. That would be the only way to really find it, I guess. What I did was I look at, for instance, if I saw that Stop &amp; Shop owns a property, I would look behind the title to try to find a special permit, and I didn't find any of those, except for the one at five Cynthia, which was originally owned by Mouse Reese, that's why I grabbed it to begin with. But I looked, you know, I looked around, I saw, you know, certain properties would stand out to me, some on Essex, that are owned by, say, builders. I would check to see if they're, they have a permit behind them, and they don't. I mean, the reality is, there might be some that are not permitted, I don't know. But I, I didn't find one for Stop &amp; Shop, no.
Yeah. Anything else?
That's it.
Great. Board members? Yep.
The parking plan doesn't work at all. Period. You don't, you've landlocked one of those spaces, how is that supposed to work? How are you supposed to get out of there? Space number six is useless and doesn't count, it can't even count for stacked, because I don't know how you're supposed to get out of there. Everybody's gonna have to move out in order to get that guy out.
I don't think that's true, I think it's stacked behind five, and if five moves, it gets out.
It's ludicrous. It could be, there is a requirement, Andrew, there used to be a requirement for how many spaces are required for a dormitory. It used to be one for whatever and whatever. Is it not in there anymore?
This, right, this is the, because this.
I think it used to be one per two beds or something, didn't it?
I don't remember, but it was some, it's been in there for a long time.
Can we let Andrew have a crack at it?
Because this is neighborhood employee housing, it's not a dormitory, there's an employer dormitory that's out in the country district.
Right.
So it's really the duplex standard for parking, and that's one per bedroom, and I don't know what your total bedroom count is here.
Six.
It's six.
It's six.
There's six spaces.
That's why we provided six.
Gotcha.
I don't think the parking works at all, because you're not just putting one person in a bedroom here, you're, it's gonna be twelve people in this structure, none of which live near, anywhere near where they're working. It just may be overkill here. You know, I don't know how, I don't know what the original parking plan looked like, did you ever look at it when it was permitted as a duplex?
Yeah, it was, it was four. I mean, it was four. So, I mean, look, let, let me say this, Linda.
Why was it four? Was that because, Andrew, we were.
It might have been before the change.
Point seven-five per bedroom, that when we were doing that one?
I think it was back when it was one parking spot per dwelling, so they actually, providing four, they were above the minimum requirement.
Yeah, and I think this is nuts, so I don't know what to do about it.
Mr. Chairman.
Whether it's, whether it's employee housing, it's not a big issue for me.
Hold on.
Except that I don't think there's gonna be any control, remote control.
Could I just ask?
Okay, go ahead.
Just for clarification, so, does NIR provide any transportation, I mean, for its employees, or?
Yeah, that's, you know, that's one of the things I, I was gonna suggest, I mean, I didn't put it on the management plan that they provide, for instance, do you mean, do they provide them a car?
No, no.
Oh, yeah, no, they, yeah, they provide bus passes for a lot of their employees anyway, so that's why I didn't put it on there, but the fact is, I guess it's six to one, half dozen to the other. You could put it as a condition, that everyone that lives there has a, has a bus pass. Chances are, they have to buy that bus pass for that person, just because of the white elephant.
Right.
Or White Elephant Hotel Residence's special permit, anyway, but, but I'm fine, if you wanna add that as a condition, obviously, that's why I added the bike, the bike rack as well, I thought, you know, that with the parking spaces.
The place has already had the same kind of use. Been here a bunch of times, it's.
Really?
I mean, Linda's right, but it's already been like this. People, you have to back in. So, you know, you have to back into the back there, else you can't, it's hard to back out.
Yeah, it's, it's that, that circle isn't big to begin with.
Well, the space between the corner of the porch and, like, the edge of the other property is where I'm talking about, you can back into those four, you know, the four spots you got marked.
There was ten feet there.
It's small when you, you know, you're not a.
Right.
Not everybody can drive the same. It's difficult. But, but, I mean, it's a duplex, it's already built, I mean, it's already here, I mean, this is, we're gonna be running into a lot of this stuff over the next ten years, whatever, stuff like this.
Yeah, Mr. Horst.
So, I don't know.
Sorry.
Mr. Chairman, just, I, you know, the planning board can put a condition on it, that not more than, so many cars are there, if, if it's found to be, if they're found to be violating the terms of the special permit, our, I, I don't know if you've seen, our enforcement personnel has been much more active, so.
I.
And we, any building inspector is authorized to do zoning enforcement, as well as the zoning compliance coordinator, so it is a condition, and I, I mean, I, personally, I think my experience is that many of the seasonal employees.
Don't have cars.
Do not have cars, or have shared cars, and utilize either the tran, you know, the, the bus system, which is right in the area, or use bikes, so.
Mike, if I was going to even go, if I was gonna touch this, there'd be no more, and I don't know what the previous plan looked like, where were the four spaces? I got six, I can't really read the other one.
Just further down, Linda, there's a.
That one, right?
Red outline, red outline, keep going, in the pages, please.
There was two on the left side between the two. Yeah, because there was a shed on the back of the.
I don't have anything in red. That's what he's trying to do, I wanna know what was there before, and that's two in the front, two here, so what I would do.
Can you do me, hold on.
I got it right there.
Hold on, can you just show her where it is, please?
I've got it.
And, why are you saying you don't?
Because I didn't have, he said, they're in red, and I said, no, this is not.
Pink.
So I got the original four.
You got it now?
If I was gonna be happy with this, there'd be no more than four cars on the site, and they are not allowed to park anywhere in the area off-site. They're not parking in the circle, they're not parking on the walkway, they're not parking out on Appleton.
May I make a suggestion?
Four spaces, and nobody else has cars.
Yeah, and, well, what I, what I had proposed in the management plan is that there'd be no more spaces than, than, there'd be no more cars than parking spaces. That is exactly what I think Andrew is suggesting.
But that's four spaces for me, not some weird-looking two other spaces that can't get out.
Okay, I think you've made your point. Mr. Horst?
Just looking at this, through, Mr. Chairman, a question for staff.
Please.
And Mr. Bodett, just looking at this through an engineering mathematical point of view, can you fit four angled parking places that are approximately thirty-six feet wide total, if they're nine feet each, against a hundred-and-twelve-point-seventy-one-foot property line budding up to Perry Lane, and make four angled parking places, and get in there and get out of there? Can you do that? Or is it not gonna work?
That is not, that's not a question for Mr. Bodett. That is a better question for Mr. Santos.
The fourth space would be right on the bottom of the property line.
Thank you, for the record, Paul Santos. Carl, there's not much you can do on that, on that site, as Nat had mentioned. It's, even the two spaces in the front, as they exist now, are, are, you, you can't just swing in there freely, so.
Okay, thank you.
I mean, this wasn't like a.
Can we kinda keep it down over there? Thank you, 'cause I've got board members over here, please. Thank you.
Yes. I was just gonna say, this wasn't like a creative exercise, I mean, we did what we could to get the six spaces.
Thank you. Di?
If this plan on page eight in red, with the six spaces, is what you're planning, tell me how space number four gets out of where he is.
He has to turn around space five to get out, that, that slight jog that space five has that pushes south of it.
But if he comes straight back, he's gonna back into the house. If he straightens out a little bit, he, he runs between the ninety-eight and the back of space number three, and the propane tank is, and it's sort of, sort of very questionable to put a bunch of youngish people in that with cars, that for Mr. Six, he's stuck for the rest of the day, never mind going anywhere.
Taking the bus.
That's right, he's taking the bus. No, I, I understand, I mean, you, you know, you know, I think it works, it's certainly not ideal, Diane, I mean, you know, I think that's what Linda is pointing out as well. I mean, it can work. Linda is pointing out as well. I mean, it can work, obviously. Wouldn't have put it on there if you couldn't get a car out. But, but I don't disagree that it, it's not, certainly not conventional.
Mr. Mark, would you?
I was, you know, I surveyed it before, Paul. When I was there, there was three cars on the side. It was a truck and a couple of cars. I mean, it wasn't dandy, but they could get in and out.
Oh, you can...
It wasn't, you could do this too, but...
You, you can get cars, three, three cars in that back area.
Yeah, you can.
You can, you can do it, so.
I'd rather see something like that than three one.
Do Joe's thinking?
Ken, guys, this, this little sidebar interjection, will you please allow other people to speak? This is getting a little frustrating.
If I could, to the chair. The thing with that, with that is, the three cars that fit, when you try to lay them in, it's nine by 20 spaces on a plan.
I know.
That's really becomes the problem. I mean, I think I've got one seven by seventeen in there, but, I mean, realistically, if you could put three, you know, lay them out that way. It's the nine by 20 that makes it look worse.
Yeah.
Did, did you have something, Mr. Woolley, you wanted to bring up?
Actually, Paul and Joe just kind of said what I was sort of thinking.
Okay.
I mean, I, I would be fine with three in the, in the crazy, you know, driver education back end parking lot.
Yeah.
You know, Dennis Cameron will get you in there. This is unbelievable. I've been here so many times in the past, I know what it's like. I can't even explain it. The front by the road is hard to get in. It isn't just that other part.
Just back in.
It's just the way the place was built. I don't know. I mean, here we are, what are we supposed to do? I mean, it's, this isn't going from a family dwelling to a duplex. This was already the same use, okay?
Can I get back through?
I would say five. I'd be fine with figuring out a way to put five on paper and holding them to five cars. That's what I would say, to Joe's point, I think.
And the, the board would waive a space, or a required space, in other words?
Yeah, I mean, oh, we get it, is that?
Yeah, you'd have to.
Notice issue.
So, so, Mr. Bodett?
I mean, I'm just saying, five spaces, and whatever has to be done to make it legal for this change, you know, I mean, to go to four and to hold them to four, to as well pack somebody down there.
Ken? Mr. Bodett?
Yes.
Thank you. You know what doesn't fail me at this point? It's a special permit. So if it's not working, we can come back and deal with this. I'm willing to give you a shot, just to see if you can make it work, and there's gonna be eyes on this anyways, as Andrew has said, through the zoning enforcement officer and the compliance officer. So I, I for one think, I, it's not, an idea to me either. I have to kind of agree with my peers a little bit. But, like I said, too, we can always open this back up as a board, if it's not functional in any way, shape, or form. So I, you have, seem to have a lot of faith in it.
Paul, have you?
Blind faith.
Mr. Chairman, can I?
So anyways.
One more question?
Yes, please.
I, I haven't been down here with you, so I can't think of exactly what. Where that, where it says utility easement, that's the reason you can't fix it, isn't it? That little utility easement thing that's written in through the...
Transformer.
Well, they get a transformer right in the way.
Is there?
Right.
Okay, okay, no, no, I wasn't, I didn't know that there was something, an object. I thought that was underground. Okay. So that, so that's it?
Yeah.
That's why you can't make the driveway...
No, that's right.
...wider.
Yeah. And I would think the barriers come into it. I mean, I've got two, two-bedroom apartments...
Yep.
That the yacht club takes every year, and that's, so that's four bedrooms. I think I've only seen two cars. You know, they promote the use of bikes. I've never seen of those four bedrooms that I have, any more than two cars. It's just a reality, I think, of how it works a lot of times.
I mean, just, just as one board member, I'm not ready to give you just some automatic waivers at this point. I, I think that sets a poor tone for what we're trying to do here, when, when other projects like this come before us. So I have to believe to a certain extent that you're gonna make it work. Again, there's other levels of mitigation the board can take at a future date. I think it compels you to make the system work at that stage as well, too. So that's just my sentiment. Did you have something?
I just said one last thing, is you're gonna extend the gravel parking?
Yeah, you've, you've got to do some work for the gravel parking.
Gravel parking?
Yes.
And then there's a hedge along there.
The hedge, I think, is right up on, on the line, Joe. So there is room, they'll leave the hedge in place. I think the hedge is on the line.
Maybe you can trim it back a bit.
I think you could, you have to do a little bit of work, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, 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 okay.
There was a shed approved at one point, and that's...
The shed never got built.
Never got built.
Go ahead, Linda.
Again, if they're not gonna bring cars, I'm only willing to give you the four spaces that were legal before, period. If they're not gonna bring cars, then they don't bring cars. They leave them wherever the hell else they're gonna leave them. They ride their bike to get the bus pass, which is right around the corner from them. So part of the conditions on the management plan would be that they're provided with bus passes. Extending any of the hardscapings going to the other board.
Of course.
But again, I don't have a problem with changing the use of the structure, to do what you need it to do. But I can't go anymore. I'm willing to waive two spaces and give you the four that you had before, because somehow those four worked. Adding a fifth space back there and creating chaos in that back section. So every car has to back out, with all those kids around there. There's a lot of kids on that cul-de-sac.
Still gotta back out.
And they're gonna be backing out to let somebody out pulling back in, backing out to let the other one out pulling back. This is insanity. The four that are there now can arguably get out, without backing every other car out and putting every other car back in, every single time four and five want to come out. I'd just soon go with the four, because somehow they made those four work all this time. Without blessing chaos on a parking plan.
Mister?
The only, I'm not arguing with you here, Linda, but there was five cars when I was there. And five gets us closer. If you restrict it to four, then that we're waiving two, instead of, which is a third of the required parking, instead of one, which is a sixth of the required parking. I think that's just better for us to do it that way.
Ken?
Because you're starting with three cars parked.
Parking has to be legal.
Ken, you let him finish, please?
But, but Joe, parking has to be legal, otherwise we gotta waive it anyway. If the five spaces don't legally work to get out, without banging into a building, without having to move one, then that space doesn't count. But you can double-load four spaces, Andrew, right? But you've got to be able to get two of them out, correct? On the double-load side-by-side, which is not what this situation really is.
We do allow a stacking option, so...
It's an existing condition.
I don't know.
That's right. I see, I see this as an existing condition. It's...
Is this a condition with four spaces?
And I'm gonna say to you right now, I think, again, I'm concerned the precedent we start setting as a board for the future, waiving at least a third of the parking here. I mean, we have done stacked parking before, so I'll tell you at four, I am not even interested in dealing with this. At five, I think you can get away with it. You'll still hear me say I'm not keen.
Just do one step.
But I think to try to work with the board here and work with the applicant, I could maybe see that clear.
Five, you mean?
Yeah.
Yeah. I mean, we want to provide the parking. I mean, we're not...
I know you do. I know, I know.
And it, and it works. I mean, look, I know, I wouldn't, I wouldn't submit something that someone couldn't get out of. And, and I'm not, I'm not disagreeing that it's unconventional and not ideal, but it works. It, it will work.
Right. And I, I think there's been enough from both staff and the board to say, it's kind of rare that you're gonna wind up using all six parking spaces. And like I said, if it's, if it's a problem, we could certainly come back to it at any stage, and then begin to make that determination then and there. So realistically, as one board member, I'm really good with six. Let's, let's watch it begin to work its magic. Which one?
The little one.
It's not stacked, it's not not stacked.
Which, which one are you talking about?
The little one right behind where it says lock.
Three, lock?
I thought with the lock and company.
They are.
They are. Yeah.
This is treated as a duplex, not as...
Wait, I didn't say the size duplex. How are they gonna get out? It's not really, there's not four stacked. Over there by itself, how is it gonna get out?
With a mini, I could, you could make that work. Digging back up, you just gotta pay attention.
Linda, we can make it nine by 20, I mean, if that's the issue.
Can't get out of all of that.
I could get out quite easily with my car.
Get out.
That's right.
Can we, can I?
All right.
Get some smart cars for your tenants.
Yeah, go ahead, please.
Andrew?
But, it's a perk.
Have you seen generally for this, the idea of having out in there, you mean?
Yeah, I think we, we have a housing issue we're trying to promote. We're not trying to be so strict on this, and I, you know, I, I understand it's not ideal, but we're not trying to provide easy parking for everybody either. I mean, you know, there, there are times where, you know, if it's inconvenient and hard, maybe there won't be the cars there. Maybe it'll be easier to take the bus and ride your bike.
Yeah.
Or buy smaller cars, so that you can fit.
Yeah, go ahead.
How many different employers are we going to be putting in here?
One.
No employee shall keep a motor vehicle upon any lot without the consent of his or her employer. We're not leasing rooms to multiple employers.
No.
Well, that should be part of this thing. It should be one employer.
Well, that's fine with us. I mean, you know, that's, that's just a standard condition that we stuck in there. I mean, you know, if they sell it, I guess it's possible, it could be more, but it's fine with us.
Bus passes need to be on the employee housing management plan, and one employer for the entire building.
One employ, yeah, okay, that's fine.
Anything else from the board?
I mean, yeah.
Go ahead.
I mean, I don't, I don't, I mean, you look at the utility easement thing with the, with the green box, and you have another transformer pedestal on the other side.
It's a mess.
It's an existing kind of a mess. I mean, I don't care what goes here. It's still gonna be a problem parking, because of the way the place is laid out. So I see this as just, I mean, they're gonna figure out what to do, because it's, it's already been happening. The same situation was happening before.
Yeah, and, and I mean, let's face it, you know...
As long as they're not parked in the street. That's the most important thing, I think, really.
Right. But let's face it, I mean, it happens on all the other, I mean, there's not a single lot on Cynthia that's got six parking spaces, I promise you that. So, I mean, you know, it happens everywhere. And, and, you know, I know we're, we're, we're here for a special permit, so I get it.
This wasn't done under like RC2 with no front, no driveway cut.
It was RC2.
It was RC2.
Yeah. It just turned to R5 a year or two ago.
Wild, open front driveways like me.
Throw on a cul-de-sac.
No, I think there's some of them that are, no, I, I don't think it's as bad, no.
No.
The other condition would be no parking in the street of any vehicle associated with this structure.
Yes, that's true.
So what are we gonna do?
Well...
Well, it's still a public hearing.
Yes, precisely. Is there any other comment from the board at this point, or from staff?
Is that put the utility?
Okay, this is a public hearing, ladies and gentlemen. If someone would like to comment on this?
Motion to close the public hearing.
Okay. Motion's now made. And Mr. Trudell, you're activated for this?
One employee.
Thank you. Motion's made in second and for discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have unanimously, pleasure of the board.
I'll make a motion to approve with bus passes. The structure in, in its entirety be one employer, and no parking in the street of any vehicle associated with this structure.
Okay.
How many spaces are we gonna agree on? You wanna go with that?
Joe says five.
I'd like, maybe make another one compact. I mean, if we want to...
It is. It is already a compact.
Five, seven by seventeen's in a compact?
Do two compacts.
Wait, what? Sorry.
No.
And three standing.
We have to waive it.
Something like that.
Just go with the five spaces. They'll have to figure it out.
Okay.
Okay.
And waiving one space, I guess.
I don't think we can do that, guys.
What?
The problem is, this wasn't advertised with the waiver for parking. They presented the, they presented the application meeting the parking requirement.
Okay, so go with six, then.
No, no, no. Go, come with the modification.
No, they have to re-advertise and everything else now.
Right.
The, the, the...
And, I mean, what we would do is continue and re-notice if we were gonna do that. Instead, I mean, let me say this. You know, why don't, well, how about a, just a condition that you can't park more than five cars there?
You still have to waive one.
Then there's still space. Why?
There'll be six spaces.
Because you didn't ask for the waiver for parking.
Right. We're still providing six spaces. We're just only allowed to park five cars there.
Yeah, that's fine.
We don't have to use six spaces, just because you have them.
Just shoot me now.
That's fine.
I like that. This time.
Yeah, we can do it.
I think that's fair.
So you're not waiving any parking?
I mean, what's the difference?
You're not waiving any parking, but only five cars can park on, that's, that's ridiculous.
That is...
The reverse approval, it's fine. I see what you're saying.
Even I think that's ridiculous.
Well, they shouldn't have to come back. There's, no one cares about this. It's the same building. Been there for 14 years.
That's not the point.
I mean, you know, the way, Linda, you know, the way, if you had, if you, if you waived two parking spaces, and there were, and there were four parking spaces there, there's nothing stopping anyone from parking six cars there.
Right.
So this is better for you.
And you didn't ask for it.
For you.
This is, actually is way better.
Oh, God.
Because that way, we didn't waive any parking spaces.
Correct.
It was a really good idea.
Because it's a special permit. You can do it.
Right.
I'm glad I thought of it.
Not me.
All right, so, board members, are we good?
So it would be requiring six spaces, and only five cars can be on-site at any given time.
Correct.
Except for cabs.
That's not on-site. So bus passes, one employer, no parking in the street of any kind with anything related to the building, and five cars on-site at any given time.
Just turn.
Not waiving any parking.
That's good.
Is that it?
Yeah.
That's mine.
I think that's where we're at.
I'll second that.
All right, so the motion's now made in second and discussion on the issue. Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye. Unbelievably reluctantly.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Those opposed? All right, unanimous by the board. Thank you.
Mr. Bodett's up next. I think so.
Well, we gotta go, eventually, we have to go back, because Paul's here, but...
Oh, no, no.
Oh, okay, yep.
But you might as well go to Mark. He's been sitting here the whole time. But you might as well go to Mark. He's been sitting here the whole time.
All right, so if you don't mind, we'll do that. Yep. Next thing before us is 12 dash 16 Nantucket Hotel Holdings LLC, 77 Eastern Street.
Hi, Mark Snyder. I'm the applicant. Do you want me to just explain what is proposed? All right. The hotel presently has terrace dining and it's covered by a roof, but we do not have walls other than curtain walls. This has created problems for us whenever the weather is stormy, especially as the hotel is open year round. And the handicap platform that accesses the ballroom is outside. So we are requesting permission to enclose this area already used for dining and an additional small enclosed area on our existing deck that allows us to bring the handicap platform inside. That's the first of the two parts here. Are there any questions about that or should I go into the second part?
Not hearing anything, so let's go.
All right. In the original MCD permit in 2012, we were permitted to have 60 guest bedrooms. We've actually only put in 52. We are requesting permission to add a small two-level addition to accommodate two new guest bedrooms, bringing us closer to our permitted allowance, so we'd have 54 instead of the original allowance of 60. The two-level addition would have a footprint of approximately 500 square feet, increasing our ground cover. The addition would be attached to the existing white townhouse, partially on top of the existing pool deck area and partially over the existing employee stairway parking area. The only access to these rooms would be from the interior of the building, not North Avenue. And the new addition would further screen the area from our neighbors. And we are also requesting permission to add a bathroom to an existing bedroom overlooking the pool above an existing pool level bathroom. And this does not increase ground cover. That's it.
Mark, I think you said you were taking out that wonky garage area underneath the addition.
The plan that you have was pre-HDC discussion. I have a revised plan, which is that we're leaving the parking there, but we're making it a closed garage area.
Yeah, garage doors.
Yes.
I'll say. Anything else from the board? I think staff. Public hearing's open, ladies and gentlemen, if anyone would like to comment on this.
Motion to close the public hearing.
Thank you. Do I hear a second? Motion, oh, by the way, special permit again, may I say, if I'm correct, so I think you're back up. Thank you, dear. Have motions now made in second and discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have unanimously and the pleasure of the board.
Motion to approve.
Thank you very much.
And do I hear a second discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have unanimously. Thanks.
Thank you now.
There we go. Okay, this is gonna cause us to fall back here a bit to. That was gonna be 46 Surfside?
Yeah.
That we need to do? All right. All right, so 21 dash 15, which is 46 Surfside Road LLC. See Mr. Santos coming down.
We gotta put this over here.
Sarah's a very good attorney, but she doesn't have your easel skills.
It'd be better if I go over there. I appreciate it. So this was the, I appreciate changing unexpected procedure today. So on the boat, I was working from the, watching the live stream from the boat. I had asked them to put it on the TV, but that was no avail, so. So I was able to watch it on my phone. So we're here before you tonight for a continuation of the hearing for 46 Surfside Road. And what we've done is made some changes to the plan. We think have addressed the concerns of the board. And would like to kind of walk through those with you tonight and see if we're, we're back on the same page here with regard to this application. As a reminder, this is 46A and 46 Surfside Road. Muse property is here to the north and the property is located right on Surfside Road, essentially across from the intersection of Windy Way, if you will. So the Muse property, Surfside Road, Windy Way. Just to reorientate yourself to the property. Manny Diaz's property here to the south, Land Bank property to the, to the east of the rear property line. So we came before you originally with this property with a, it's a restaurant proposal, a rehab of the existing structure here to a restaurant proposal with a commercial component here on the Jim Weeman's building that was taken off, which was a single-family residence, will now be incorporated into a professional office building. Architect engineer's office with housing above. The restaurant proposal has a housing unit along the backside, which would be dedicated to the restaurant use on the 46 property. We initially came in and then came back with a loading area along the Surfside Road area here. We have left that in place. Would like to speak again. We've made some design revisions to that. We feel that that's an important component to the property. We think under this configuration, it works. We did have a traffic study done and from a traffic component, all the sightlines work utilizing this as a loading area here. No sightline issues coming in and out of this driveway, no sightline issues coming out of, of that driveway there. So the changes to the plan are kind of what we've done here is we've incorporated a handicap spot here at the commercial or office building, if you will. The space between the spaces here and here has been extended out to well over, I think, 30 feet or so because of the configuration. It's not a standard aisle in and out. There's a 30-foot space in here to get cars in and out and have the office building kind of work on its own during office hours. It's work under its own component with an in and out along Surfside Road. So the handicap zone, the extra width of the space. What we've done is in this area here, extending the parking lot further to the west by adding potential future spaces. And what we're asking there is there's some trees and landscape in here that we'd like to leave, but we have dedicated it as an area for future spaces. That could be a condition of approval that if in case this parking configuration, we feel that it's not sufficiently working, that we could add spaces in this area here where that tree, that cherry tree is now, is now sitting. Number four would be we left a Belgium block rumble strip here in this area here as opposed to a raised, a raised curb along the loading area. That way vehicles could come past in the loading zone area here. Again, sightline, no problem, but this is a rumble strip kind of, or in that area as opposed to a raised curb. We've added a loading zone sign at the, the front area for the loading zone. We've increased the width of the entrance and exit in and out of the restaurant component with a two-way traffic inbound and outbound in excess. I think we've done it up to 18 feet or so. We've gone to the max that we think we can go, or the minimum we think we can go to have, comfortably have two-way traffic in and out. We've added screening, boxwood screening along the front area here between the proposed loading zone and the building itself. We've also added hardscape and landscaping from the loading zone to the walkway as an entrance into the building, which would be our loading path in this area here. The red area that you see is all brick. The other areas would be a mixed gravel shell parking. And we have pulled back the existing, there's an existing timber landscape feature in here. We've pulled that back out of the layout and shown that being shown completely within the property itself. So there's no, again, no sightline restriction or no obstruction in this area here in front of the, the existing parking entrance coming in and out of the subject property. Essentially, right now, we've got a 34-seat, we're asking for a 34-seat restaurant with essentially seven employees and then the component of the office and residential use within that proposed redeveloped existing building. And I think that goes through, let me just kind of check my notes here.
Paul, I think you added the more brickwork, so there was a continuous hard path?
Yes, yeah, that brickwork here is a connection from the loading zone right into the site, so that's our path from the loading zone and in. And we've also designated, we still have designated two spaces out in the loading zone area that could potentially be used once that loading schedule is established. And there could be an area in the front that we have two spaces. Here, stack spaces that could potentially be used for an in and out along that area once we, once we determine what the actual loading zone and schedule is for this particular area. It is an area that we feel could be utilized by the Muse, could be utilized by the new, the old shack or whatever, Yummy, or whatever that is now. It's a potential spot where they could load and unload here, other businesses on Windy Way. It is an area that could be utilized not only for this site, but for other, other businesses within this area. And would be happy to answer any questions that you may have. I mean, I know that originally, we did talk about the loading zone. There was some talk against it at the next meeting. We do feel it's an important component. I do think it works in this case. It would require a license from the Board of Selectment as it does occur within the, within the layout of Surfside Road. But we feel under this scenario that we've addressed some of the screening concerns. We've addressed the, the fact that we have no sightline issues. And we have brought our parking numbers essentially within one space, if you will, when you start looking at these future spaces of what the requirement would be for a 34-seat restaurant and the, the commercial or office component of that existing structure right there.
I, I do want to know, Paul, I don't know if you have the number, but one of the changes to the loading zone is that it was brought significantly closer to the property to eliminate the sightline issue at Surfside Road that was previously addressed. So I don't know if it's maybe eight or 10 feet closer, but it's, it's significantly closer than it was before.
Yep, go ahead.
How do you want to deal with employee parking? Is that included in this calculation for each building or where's the employee parking count for both of them?
Yeah, it's, it's in the total, the total numbers, so I think seven employees would be three spaces, is that correct? One per, one per three, yeah. So it's, it's included as part of these total numbers, the employee spaces are included within the, within the parking calculations.
Only a couple of things about that. If the employees are there, they're on site for a while, is there any reason why you can't double them up in the back of the property? To get them out of the other spaces?
Oh, we could designate employee spaces. That's not, that's not.
But not two of the ones that I'm saying that you have listed right now. Could they double in another two in on the backside of the building? You said there's somebody who's gonna be living in the apartment anyway.
Yeah, and actually, that's a case where, you know, you're actually double counting a space, because if, if the.
They're gonna be working on the, on the site?
The apartment's counting as a space. We're, I think they've committed to dedicating that unit on the backside of the restaurant to an employee of the, whether it be the manager or an employee.
It's easier to get, it'd just be great to get that car in front of space. I can't read it.
Were you talking like, down by the dumpsters?
Yeah, in front, have a space where you have a little walkway between the two. Have a space that's blocked because he's not going anywhere if he's working there.
Do you mean adding a stack space?
Yeah, adding a stack space for the, for the person living in that apartment?
Oh, yeah, that'd be no problem. I mean, I don't think, well, my open space numbers, I think are no, I think I've got, I've got 32% open space.
Yeah.
So I've got room. Yeah, there's no, and there's actually a path that we've shown, kind of a connection path between the upper and lower parking lot. But putting a stack space in the back would not be, would not be an issue.
Because that would take, that'd give you one more space for patrons. Now, is there takeout in here?
Well, the use is prospective, so we don't know, there's no tenant yet.
Right. So we don't know if there's takeout, because obviously if there's takeout, takeout ancillary to the restaurant isn't, is all included. If there's a whole takeout thing going on, that's a whole nother bunch of spaces.
No, there isn't a, there isn't a takeout that would require five spaces per takeout station. But takeout ancillary to the restaurant is already figured into what you would have here.
And what do we do with the, I appreciate what you did with the loading zone, because I went out there and spent some time with you guys when it was cold.
Yeah.
Were they, did we determine what the hours were, sort of?
I believe that we proposed six to 10 or something, but part of the issue here is that because there's no tenant, it's hard to tell
Right.
exactly what our, what, you know, we, we think it's gonna be more of a family-type place than a bar, but, you know, we're trying to keep the options open there. But let, let me just back up to your question from, from a second ago, Linda. I think in terms of adding a space here, in the same way we'd like to keep that beautiful cherry tree and some of the green trees up front, I think we'd like to be able to keep this little backyard. So if you don't mind, then the same way we have these two spaces here marked as, as potential future spaces, maybe we can have that stack space marked as a future space too. And we could bleed into it if it, if it develops as a need, because I know that the applicant would like to try to maintain some semblance of, you know, not paving over the whole thing.
Okay, and.
And then, just to follow up on the question of a takeout, because there's no tenant, what I think, what my client would really like included in the decision is that alterations to the use that are, that are allowed uses that don't change the parking, don't need future relief as long as the applicant adjusts for compliance. So what I mean by that is right now, we have calculated based on seating. If we go to a separate takeout station, we would have to eliminate seats to make, to keep the parking calculation the same, but we wouldn't necessarily need to come back.
I'm just worried about leaving it that kind of open-ended, Andrew and Leslie, because there are some uses that can be a lot more intense than other uses. And that would worry me. I mean, right now, we're, we're approving a restaurant with 32 seats. I would rather not give you an open-ended carte blanche on, so long as it doesn't increase the parking. Because there are certain categories of uses that are far worse than eight four-tops. So I don't know where to go with that particular request, but I don't have a problem with this layout anymore, because you've moved some things around for me. And the hours, you said, you've got to be considerate of the guys. The Daisers up to this point have had a dwelling historically.
Right.
For 50 years, in between them and the Muse.
Right.
Now, to use a term that came from an old ZBA member, creeping commercialism. It's legal. It's commercial property.
Well, it's RC two, as you know.
And, you know, they know it's RC two. It's just that now we have to be considerate of the hours for the Diaz family. They've been there longer than anybody else on Surfside Road.
Right.
Now, you said six in the morning?
Well, the thought was that, you know, a breakfast place that could run, you know, basically three meals, but I, again, because it's no tenant, we don't have exact hours. I, I guess what I would say is we could put hours in place that the commission feels are appropriate and then come back for an adjustment of those with, with a tenant. Eight, eight to 10?
I don't know how anybody else feels, but we don't have anything out there that opens at 6 o'clock in the morning.
You know, breakfast place, that's not a noisy establishment, but it certainly.
What kind of places do you go?
There, I, I don't know that, I mean, the, the bake shot, the.
Flake is not quiet.
The.
But I would, I would rather not see it open at 6 o'clock in the morning at this point. Until we know what's going in there.
Let's, let's go with eight to 10 or whatever the commission feels is, is a good placeholder and we could always revisit if there's some need. But in terms of uses, I, I don't want to suggest that, that we do something too much of a blank check. But if we could perhaps include retail and takeout, I don't know that those are more intensive. As long as we're not breaking the parking calculation. They're essentially the same.
I, I don't know. Can I ask the staff what they think about that?
Yeah, go ahead.
Andrew, Leslie. We usually don't leave it that open-ended. I can't see them. We don't usually leave it that open-ended, do we?
Fred, you want to hear from the board first?
No, Andrew.
Usually you, well, I mean, the type of use and the, and the character of what the operation is usually important to you all on the board. So, I mean, you're representing a family-type restaurant, but if it became more of a, you know, a different clientele, it could create a problem. So, I don't.
It means it's a special permit.
All right, but, hang on. You all done, Andrew?
I, I would just, I mean, I think that, you know, not knowing the tenant, not knowing the specific operation, you want to be fairly conservative in what you approve.
Yeah.
Mr. Law?
I mean, my point, as far as the takeout goes, I mean, we could, we could find that waiving the parking for, for takeout after it's up and running with whatever it, it's gonna be, would be fine. We don't know that yet.
Yeah.
So I, I mean, I have no problem with the way it's set up now. I think it's good. Give it up on, on everything that we were talking about. It's fine.
Yeah.
But how do we set it up with an MCD, with they're getting approval, obviously, to, to sell the project? I mean, I, I get that. We've done that with a lot of things. But I just can't remember what we, like with some of these ones that we get a permit, but we don't really know what's gonna happen. How do we, how do we? Well, we have, well, we have.
Again, a special permit, you, you have available a, a number of conditions that you can put on.
Can we just say, when you get a tenant, you come back to us?
Yeah, I mean, if it's, if it's an issue for the commission, we don't necessarily need to, I, I don't want to do something that's gonna make it too complicated. You know, as I think Ms. Williams noted, takeout included within a restaurant is not, doesn't require additional, really, for additional parking. So, you know.
Takeout station under itself does require five spaces.
Right.
Takeout ancillary to a restaurant, but the Seagull is not takeout, but you can get takeout.
Yeah, yeah.
That doesn't require any extra spaces, but if you've got a whole takeout station, which is separate than your thing.
Yeah, okay.
That's different.
Right. It, it changes the parking formula, but we, why don't we, I mean, I think we'd like to get the permit in place and then if we have a tenant who needs an adjustment, we can come back.
Paul, is it, it's two lots, right?
This is two lots, correct.
Do each of the lots by themselves make the open space calculation?
Well, it's two lots, but it's a combined, it's an MCD file for the entire property.
But you could sell the engineering building and then it wouldn't make open space, right?
Well, but you'd still be, I, I, Joey, answer your question, Joey. I haven't, I didn't, I never ran it that way because it was, I always, it's, it's one MCD. So the permit is gonna run with both properties, so the open space is gonna be tied to the complex as a whole. Some of it, it's the same way, so Sparks have the Cumberland Farm site, that's actually two, that's Noonan's building, you know, it's the same thing.
I'm, I'm fine.
Yeah.
And then the other thing is, the hours of operation of the engineering building, are they gonna be, well, I know we don't care, but to me, there is a buffer to the restaurant in a sense.
Yeah.
Correct.
It is, what, 50, 60 feet?
Yeah, the, the five parking spaces shown for the commercial building are dedicated to the commercial building. Now.
So the breakfast people aren't gonna be parking there? Right?
No, those five spaces aren't dedicated to breakfast, but I don't know whether or not it would make sense to have them parked there. It's, it's extra spaces that could essentially be used.
Well, now I would think the reverse.
Yeah.
If you want to keep the Daisers.
Oh, well, sure, if, I mean, you want. Oh, well, sure, if, I mean, you want, you want to respect them over there, you'd let that parking lot stay where it is.
Only for the rest, only for the engineering.
Yeah, and the resident, there's an apartment above that too, so the residential would be, that would be there too. So under the, with that spec, the stacked space that Linda, that you were talking about, with that, you'd basically bringing, you'd essentially have dedicated on the site the required number of parking spaces, which is twenty. So the way I labeled the original two up front was that two spaces shown as future parking spaces to be constructed upon request of the planning board after one year of facility operation. That would then be three spaces if you included that third space in the back, and you'd have the twenty spaces required, but you'd be basically taking three of them and holding them for a one-year timeframe to look at, look at how the operation works.
Right, and, and in addition to that, we'd have the two, potentially the two spaces in the, in the layout, which I know aren't, don't count as onsite, and we also have the fact that the employee space and the apartment space are essentially double counting that, that need, because it's the same people.
Did you want to do a one-way-in, one-way-out on that, with the, with the flow of traffic? So they're not backing out into the street on those front two that'll be there after ten, after four o'clock in the afternoon? The trucks should come in and then go out instead of crossing traffic? They should be one way into that front section and one way out?
Oh, definitely.
Here?
Yes.
Yes. Yeah, definitely on the loading zone, yes.
I would hope so.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. And then one other thing too, it is in the public water recharge, so we're going to need a letter of water quality certification. So it's going to need a complete recharge drainage system that would be signed off by Wantacomet. And typically, in that case, we'd also send that to Ed Pesci.
Okay.
Anyone else on the board?
Yes.
Yes, sir, Mr. Borcher.
I just have two issues. Mr. Santos, through you, Mr. Chairman, I ask Mr. Santos. Can I, it sounds like Ms. Williams and you folks are out there looking at the loading zone area. Did you calculate opening a door of a car or truck toward the Belgium block? Is it going to be close to the Surfside pavement, or not?
Oh, no, so what you have there is those spaces that you see there are nine by twenty?
Mm-hmm.
The block, I think, is around four or five feet. No, it wouldn't be.
Okay.
Yeah, you wouldn't.
I'm, I'm just a little...
You'd have enough separation there.
I'm just a little nervous about a thirty-five mile an hour road with parallel spots, because it works pretty well. Stop-and-shop people are slowing down a lot in a thirty mile an hour zone to twenty or so. But I'm a little nervous about thirty-five mile an hours on Surfside Road there, but it sounds like it's pretty well off.
That's why it's fur, it's further back than what I originally designed. And that was actually, the layout that you see here was more so a combination of what the board had discussed, and then when we got the traffic engineer involved, he got everything pushed back further, made it wider, because of his sight lines.
Okay.
Yeah.
But then, between that, between that nine-foot space, is that Belgium block is another, what, three or four feet?
Oh, it's over there. It's like four or five, yeah.
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 Okay, and the second thing was, perhaps you worked with a traffic engineer already. As you know, may know, there's a crosswalk for the muse down towards the Icerink Road, about two hundred feet down.
Mm-hmm.
Have you considered putting a crosswalk in from Brenda and the bike path over to this location? So your guests can come in from the bike path in the neighborhoods and walk safely across Surfside Road to the restaurant? Brenda, Brenda.
What?
Wendy.
It's windy. It'd be a windy way, it would be right across the street.
Yeah. Is that an option, or have you considered that?
I don't, I don't know what the process is for getting a crosswalk. I'm assuming it's Traffic Safety Committee and Selectmen.
It's DPW, Police Chief, and Town Manager, and then a Town Engineer, so.
I think there's a, I think there's a crosswalk related to the, the NRTA stuff.
Yeah, I was just saying.
Yeah.
Yeah, there is, which is on the muse.
You can't put a crosswalk to the entirety of each other.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's all I have, thank you.
Anyone else on the board? So, all right. So the, Mr. Santos, when you say those parking spaces won't be triggered, you're saying a year from when the primary use of the restaurant is up?
I mean, it's up to the, I just put down, the way I wrote it was, which honestly, this would be incorporated into any, you know, draft decision. So it would be three spaces shown as future parking spot, or spots, to be constructed upon request of the planning board after one year of facility operation.
There you go, perfect. That's, that's what I'm looking for.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'd probably prefer if it was two years as opposed to one, if you don't mind.
Yeah, so I, if, when staff drafts the decision, or however, working with Steve, we can...
Because sometimes we actually have to watch the things cycle through a year's worth of time before we get a good feel for things.
Yeah.
So I'd probably respectfully say two to you.
Yeah, Barry, do you mean, you mean twice? You mean come back in a year, and then in another year?
I'm fine with just, I'm just fine with leaving it open-ended at two years' worth of time, under which we can decide what, what to do with those parking spaces.
Okay.
I just don't want to let it go at the end of a year.
Right.
Without, without having at least had a little bit of time to absorb it.
I, I think that makes sense.
Okay. The, the other thing is that, I mean, you've certainly represented a family restaurant. As Linda said earlier, I, I agree with her. This is what you're proposing, this is what we're going to stick with, the applicant wants to do, you know, whoever buys this thing wants to do something different, so be it, we can deal with it then. Your hours of operation, I mean, I'm willing to go to seven to nine, right now. Ten in this area, I, outside of the muse, is, I don't know what else is open at that juncture. But until we get a sense of what is going to start happening
Yeah.
with the building itself, I, I'd really prefer to limit those hours right now, and then we, once we get a sense of who's going in, what they all want to do, then I think we can have a much more fruitful discussion at another public hearing. And I think the public's entitled to know what that is.
Will you open at eight o'clock, Barry?
What's that?
Do you open at eight o'clock in the morning?
And I'm willing to let them go to seven, but I, I'm not keen on ten right now until I get a better sense. That's just my two cents on it.
I, I do have a question. You just mean hours open to the public, because in these kind of businesses...
Oh, of course.
You know, the, the prep time on both ends, and, yeah, okay.
I, I know you've got to be in there earlier than that, and I know you need probably about the better part of two or three hours to break everything down afterwards.
Right, clean up all that stuff, yeah.
Right. I, I would like to see, too, with your engineering building, to establish hours on that, because, let's be serious, as much as you're going to dedicate those spaces in there, on a fine summer day, when it's raining out, do you think people are really going to care? You know, short of, short of you going out there with, with an enforcement stick. So I'm just saying, as much as you want to put, the signage will probably be as effective as what happens at the, at the post office. People still park. People still park wherever they want to. So I'm just saying to you,
Sure.
I just, going back with that thought in mind, I think just establishing what, what's going to happen with your other building just sets a little bit better tone for the board to kind of look at how the whole dynamic flows.
Yeah, would you be comfortable with eight to seven, which I think is probably longer than needed, but I, you know.
I personally, yeah, and I see my board members kind of shaking their head.
Eight to eight, we find it.
Eight to eight, yeah, I mean...
Yeah, I...
Let me know where to go in that time period, depending on what you're going to do. It could be you don't do there, because the muse is running. It could be they do, like, the flake.
Right, the flake is closed at two, right?
Yeah, or three now, it's okay.
Yeah, and I think you can bring that back up at the same time. You know, at least it's there on, on our, on our notification. So if you do, so if you do bring it back up.
Okay.
You know, at least it's there to kind of trigger that off as well, too. Whatever, whatever you want to make it right now, eight to eight is fine for the engineering.
Okay, I, I think that makes sense. It's not intended to be kind of late-night business.
Good. Yeah, just one second, I just want to make sure I covered everything. Yep.
So I do have a question. Because this is contingent on approval from the town, I want to figure out if this is a condition that we need to hold the he, the hearing open for, or if you're willing to issue the permit, either way.
Well, you're going to need it for a loading zone, no matter what's in that building.
Right, that's what I'm saying. I don't, I don't think we can close, I don't know if you can close the public hearing, I don't think you can.
No, I think you just leave it open.
Good, well, it would be having to reopen the public hearing if you didn't get it, but go ahead.
Yeah, with, we have written decisions in the past that, you know, what we can require is that they, they ask the, the Board of Selectmen and County Commissioners for permission to do it, but we do not
Make it.
We don't predicate the, no, we don't defer authority to somebody else, so, I mean, I think it'd be better, actually, to, you know, grant the approval, require them to make the request. If it's denied, then we would probably call to reopen the hearing.
Okay, that's great, which is actually, I think, what you did on the Comcast one, now that
Right.
I think about it. That'd be great.
And we just brought that up, really, it's like another application before, so not making it contingent upon whatever
Right.
board is out there. Sir?
Mr. Chairman, I have one question. I did talk to the owner about the concept of maybe exiting through the back of where the muse is. Do you know, did those conversations happen, or?
Trying to have this come through here.
Yeah.
Yeah, the problem is, the owner of the muse has so much stuff there that he doesn't have any place to move it to.
Okay.
So, you know, he wanted to be cooperative, but it just...
That wasn't going to work, okay. I just wanted to see if the discussion happened, that's all.
It, it, it did, and I think he's also got, you know, he, he's trying not to, you know, violate the terms of his financing by encumbering the property, and, you know.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, that was a good point. Anything else from the board? It's a public hearing, ladies and gentlemen, if anyone would like to comment on this. Not seeing anyone.
Uh, what am I doing?
Closing the public hearing.
Motion to close the public hearing?
Yep, and that would be a second discussion, hearing. Oh, by the way, Mr. Fadell, you're up. Did I skip over you, Carl? I'm so sorry.
It's Carl's turn.
I lost track.
It's Carl's turn.
I'll tell you in about two seconds, hold on. I'm sorry, Carl, you're up. Do you think it's his turn?
It's Carl's turn.
You think so?
Yes.
Okay, good. So the motion's not made in second.
I have to do it at the HDC every single hearing.
Motion's not made in second discussion, hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have unanimously, and the pleasure of the board.
Andrew, am I, Andrew, what's the language I'm using about the selectman part of this?
We, we'll handle that in the decision, I...
Right.
Okay.
Because he does need a loading zone.
Yeah.
Correct.
Right, I think, I think that it was, the issue is, it's just going to be a requirement, and if we can't meet it, we'll deal with it.
We have standard language regarding that, that we'll put in.
And the hours are eight to eight.
Do you guys need to have staff recap?
No.
No?
And the hours are...
Hours are eight to eight on the restaurant at this time, not knowing who the...
No, on the engineering.
On the engineering, eight to eight on the engineering, and eight to ten on the restaurant?
Yeah.
That makes me happy.
I, I just want to be clear, though, this office space is not necessarily engineering, I think that's a...
No, it's not. It's architecture. It's an office space.
It's an office, office space.
Eight to eight, to the public.
Right.
And the restaurant is open eight to eight at the moment, or eight to ten to the public.
Yeah, I think Barry said eight to nine.
Eight to nine?
Nine thirty.
Because once you figure out, I'm just saying...
Can you name that tune in three notes?
Yeah, I said eight to nine, because they're going to have to come back anyways, if they're not going to do a family restaurant.
Okay, so we're going eight to eight on the architectural office building, which is just an office building, and we're going, what?
Eight to nine?
Eight to nine on the restaurant, open to the public. Okay.
Yep.
Yeah, whatever that is.
Yeah, the, the three, those are going to be unconstructed.
You're not touching that tree, so give that up.
We really don't want to, it's a beautiful...
Don't give it up.
Nice tree.
What else?
The two at the top and then...
Leslie, Andrew, was there anything else that's...
Um, Mr. Chairman...
Oh, it's one way, if we're going to, if we're going to have a loading zone, guys?
Right.
Leslie?
You got that week.
If we're going to have a loading zone, it's one way in from the south and out from the north, and the loading zone, usually it's the ones downtown, or out of town, even ten to four. And after four o'clock, they can be used for restaurant parking.
I, I think I defer to staff, just to...
Nobody's delivering out there after four o'clock.
I agree with that, it's just what time of the morning.
Well, I just, I don't want to get ahead of the...
It's usually ten, they don't get out there until noon.
Of the town on what we can and cannot do with that land.
Yeah.
All right, so we leave the time off right now?
Andrew?
Are you going to require bus passes for
For the business?
employees of the restaurant, not necessarily the architectural?
Yeah.
The restaurant.
Bus, bus passes and a bike rack.
Bike rack. I, I don't think there's a bike rack shown on the plan, I guess.
No, there isn't, and there should be.
Well, we can add one down in the open space.
Yeah.
Or maybe up front, whatever makes sense.
So that's the story. Is that enough?
All right, hold on, hold on, that's why I'm having, because this has been running for a while.
Yeah, so what?
I, I just have a conflicting note. Did you want to have them check in after a year of operation?
Two.
Two.
Okay, two years, that's what I have.
Yeah, I just,
Okay.
Yeah, I just want to make sure those parking spaces aren't lost in the first year, that we actually have two years to evaluate before we trigger them.
And you seconded, right?
Or if we need to trigger them.
Okay.
Right.
Was there anything else?
I know, I don't know that Linda said it, but I know that we've agreed to with the duplex, or the rear...
The apartment in the restaurant is restricted to an employee of the restaurant.
Correct, yeah.
Leslie? The apartment in the back of the restaurant is restricted to an employee of the restaurant.
Right, but not the dwelling.
Employee, parentheses, employees. Could be a couple.
Right.
Anything else?
Okay, I have one last question.
Yeah, please, now that's, that's actually, there's been a lot of...
This is probably to Paul Santos. Sort of the, that angle of the loading zone on the south side?
Hmm? There's no loading zone down there.
It seems really angular. Is, is that going to work, or should it be a little rounded?
What loading zone?
She means coming in from the south. Truck trail will fit, but that's kind of...
The bigger truck, that's, that was actually the layout from the traffic engineer. I'll see what I can do to, because actually, we're, we were trying to maybe soften that up anyway, because we've got that other big maple that's, there's another, you got the cherry tree on the upper end, but there's a pretty good-sized maple down that end. So we'll revisit that, but this original layout was, was directly from the traffic engineer.
Okay, with the adjustment to the site plan through staff.
Right. Now, I'll second it. We good, everyone, now?
Move on.
Okay, if you're all clear at this point, if there's no further discussion, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Those opposed, ayes have unanimously.
Thank you.
Great, thank you. So...
Which one?
Thirty-six.
Yeah, so you've got a few Warren articles before you at this point that need to be addressed, so let's start with Article thirty-six. Ms. Vorse.
So Article thirty-six, the one issue that we needed to talk about here is the apartment building. The CMI one-dwelling unit is in section? Okay, in the motion, yeah.
This is being held by the tin cop.
Until tomorrow, if I'm not mistaken?
Right. So the, the, in the CMI one-dwelling unit for each fifteen hundred square feet of lot, so this, there were some people talking about apartment buildings that this, this requirement might be too
Owners?
High. If it were twelve fifty, for example, on a five thousand square foot lot, you could do four dwelling units. Or if it was one thousand, you could do five. There are some existing four units that seem to work, so that would be a standard of twelve fifty. So, I mean, I think that we're comfortable recommending the twelve fifty if that is something you all think would work.
Board members, any discussion?
I'm tired of talking. You think it's a good idea?
That's okay, we'll get him in a minute, is there anything else?
That's, that's all we have, I believe, right?
Yeah, it had to be re-advertised because of the workforce housing provision.
Gotcha, okay, so, this is a public hearing, ladies and gentlemen, if anyone would like to comment on this, Patrick, good evening. You've been very patient, thank you.
Oh, um, Patrick Rage, I was, I'm not sure about the process, but I didn't know if the whole public hearing on Article 36 has already been, like, partially closed off, meaning, I wanted to see if there was an opportunity, see if we could add in shared parking for the whole CMI district, I mean, I think if you look at the entire, certainly where I, you know, where I'm involved in, but, you know, up and down West Creek Road, and really everywhere, I think we would be doing a great service by adding shared parking for the entire CMI district, so, that's all I have to say.
That's a good point.
It's a great point.
Go ahead.
Right, it's, it is a good point, and it's something that we have been striving to put in all our special permits, and, and to allow for, you know, parking within 500 feet, it's, unfortunately, it's beyond the scope of this particular issue, but we are having a special town meeting in the fall, so it's something that maybe we can look into for then.
Put it on the punch list.
We, we have to, in order to be in the scope, we have to be looking at the specific sections that we've identified, and that will be in a different section, all right?
Mr. Comment?
Anyone else in the audience? Okay.
The special permits involved with the chicken box, your building, and the bamboo, there was a lot of shared parking written into the original ZBA permits? That was anticipated, just because they put up signs, which I made them take down?
Sure.
There's still some conversation that we all have to have when they all come up here next week, because we anticipated those three sharing parking, and when those signs went up, that wasn't copacetic, I did call them, they did take the signs down.
It certainly appreciated, I just think that, in particularly West Creek Road, and really everywhere, if, you know, we're changing the zoning to try to increase the business there, it's, it's a problem, and it was identified in the Mid Island...
Eric?
And we did, we did talk about it at length with West Creek Road, because everybody's doing it no matter what we say.
Sure, okay.
We just might, we just gotta make sure that they understand that that's what's gonna be happening.
Patrick, thanks for bringing it up, and I, I think you've heard staff say we're gonna try to bring it back at a relatively soon town meeting.
That's always my impression.
Thank you, sir.
Thanks.
Anyone else in the audience wishing to comment on this?
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Motion's now made in second discussion, hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have unanimously, in the pleasure of the board.
Motion to make a favorable recommendation with the reduction down to 1,250.
Great.
Andrew, is that expanding the scope, or are we still within that scope, it's making it less onerous by giving you another unit?
We're setting a standard, I mean, that's part of the, in, in a very limited area, so...
Okay, twelve, down to 1,250.
Okay, that motion's now made, and...
In the CMI.
Seconded, seconded, discussion, hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have unanimously, Article 52, zoning by law amendment, Chapter 139, Sections 2, 7, and 18 of the Code of the Town in Nantucket, to allow the creation of a tiny house unit, this is a citizen's petition.
I think we worked this out.
Not...
He's not here.
Seeing anyone?
We worked it out in the office.
Oh, well, I, I'm glad you did, because I wasn't privileged to that.
Well, I met with Isaiah, I got him to come in and talk to Leslie.
Yeah, well, you know, I think the rest of the board would be just as curious at this point.
Well, Leslie will tell you what happened.
Yep.
But I had to move him in one direction.
So, Mr. Chairman, Linda and I did meet with the proponent of the article.
Yep.
There were some technical flaws in the way that it was written.
Yep.
And we assisted him with correcting those, and so I've provided you with a document. You know, I don't remember if we talked about this back in January or not, but I think this largely fits within the tertiary dwelling, with the exception of, I think, Mr. Stover's real intent was to be able to have something that's on wheels, except covered sort of like a normal foundation, and realistically, I think for Nantucket, I don't really see what the benefit is, I mean, you still have to connect it to some kind of sewer or septic, you still have to connect it to some kind of water, I just don't see how practical this would be.
Yep, go ahead.
It doesn't do any harm to go ahead and put it in, there's a great deal of support, and rather than get into an argument about it on town meeting floor, it doesn't hurt us, it doesn't help us, it does give one more little thing that people can hang on to, so, it, it, it's not gonna hurt anybody to put it in, I'm back to the family member thing again, the steps, this, that didn't get corrected, the stepsister, stepbrother, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah, it's...
It's not, it's not tracking the other one that we fixed with Dave's.
Well, yeah, we couldn't use that exact language, but I think it gets to the same point, it's the person or their spouse, their children or their spouse's children, their parents or their spouse's parents, their grandparents or the spouse's grandparents, their brothers and sisters or the spouse's brothers and sisters, I think that includes all of the...
Except for stepchildren.
If it's, if you're married and your spouse is child, then it's your stepchild.
Okay. Because Dave, we had to add that language. Really, you know how opposed I was to this, last year and this year, so it resulted in a tertiary dwelling one. This isn't gonna, if anybody uses it, they use it, if they don't, they don't, the HGC is gonna make them, I did talk to him, we talked to him at length about, can the wheels come off, yes, which means they go down on the ground, and they have, you know, a little foundation built on the outs, a little concrete foundation built on the outside, because it looks so, it looks like a small structure, but when they wanna move it, and they put the wheels back in the, the hubs there, and then they just cart it away and move to another lot, and we came up with multiple scenarios where that, for maybe five people, that'll ever work for, where the, if you're building your property, and you can't afford to build a big humongous garage apartment while you're building your main house, then you sell it to somebody else doing the same thing, you can live on your property while you're building your house without spending more than 20 or 30,000 dollars, so, if somebody makes, avails themselves of this, that's great, it doesn't hurt us to have it in the bylaw, really, so I don't, I don't have as much of a craziness by it, it's, people already got it, they got it last year, we just didn't have it together, and all the technical flaws have been corrected, because there were quite a few.
Still in two thirds, eh?
Yeah, zoning.
Here's, here's my concern, all right, I'm, I'm really not crazy about Little House on Wheels, and the second thing is, I think we went to a great extent to establish what the tertiary dwelling is, okay? I feel like you're just creating something else for the sake of political ease here, which really, I think, to a certain extent, is our tertiary dwellings, I don't get it, why do I wanna do the same thing twice, and if you're gonna insert code twice, you understand you're gonna have to keep changing it twice as well, too. I don't, it's, it's too close to what we're trying to do with the tertiary dwelling outside of, oh my god, it has wheels on it, okay, that's it, that's it, so, you know, I, I think, and I'm kinda surprised that, that the conversation was allowed to flow to that level, I, I, for one, would have loved to have had the applicant here, you know, but I, 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 for one, on this board, am not keen about reduplicating the effort, we've done it, we went to great length, we had good discussion last year, I think we've seen that, short of, of, of the ridiculousness of a cap that was brought up, or limiting units, it works well, so, what difference does it make if they come in with a tiny house versus if they come in for a tertiary dwelling? It's, it's, it's verbiage.
You can't move it, and the cost is tremendously less, tremendously less than a tertiary dwelling.
I, I don't know about that, because if you wanted to put your quote-unquote tiny house in, what difference does it make? You're, you're doing the same thing, it's still a tertiary dwelling.
No, it's already built, for the most, they're kit-built.
Can I ask you a dumb question, Mr. Vorse? Mr. Vorse, would it make a difference with a tertiary dwelling if it was prefab versus, yeah, that's what I'm saying to you, I don't get it.
No, as far as cost to the person getting one, it's much cheaper.
Why, because it's called a tiny house as opposed to a tertiary dwelling?
No, because of the type of construction, the simplicity of the construction, it's all one room, for the most part.
Am I missing something here?
Yes, tremendously.
I don't think so, Mr. Vorse?
So, the way this is written now, I'm not clear at all that, I mean, the tertiary, a tiny house could be a tertiary dwelling, there's no question about that, so, I, I'm concerned about two parts of this, number one is, this, this could be an additional one, it doesn't, it doesn't say... It doesn't really say anything, and I, I also wonder how this possibly fits in the uniformity requirement under state law, that, you know, that you have to be this family member, I mean, you know, generally zoning can't, you know, put these, that only a certain distinct group gets a benefit.
Can't, you just let him, let him finish up for a minute, please?
So, and just to circle back, so a tertiary dwelling is just a simple allowance, and it doesn't really make any value judgments about who can live there, and who, what the relationship of the person is, I mean, it clearly could be, if you're wanting to make, you know, a small unit available on your property for relative, that's fine, but I, I'm, I'm just concerned about this language here, doesn't...
I mean...
I mean, you know, a covenant is one thing, but, but this, this just doesn't seem to be tight enough.
I don't think we added that language, I'm not sure where that language came from, because I don't remember having any, the only reason, the reason it came up is, Andrew, is ownership of the lot versus the structure, versus not having the same ownership, and in our bylaw, you know, there's a bit of an issue without a covenant, about somebody owning and not owning the land, but I don't care about this language, if you wanna take it out, because I don't remember putting it in. So I think that was the real issue, is how do you own a structure that's on land, unless it's a land lease, then you're just parking your thing on their land for a particular amount of time.
Through you, Mr. Chairman, the, the owner, you know, would have to allow this to be on the property.
Right.
You know, I guess the idea, if it's on wheels, it can be rolled onto the property, but it has to be secured legally by something, I mean, by a lease or something, right?
Yeah.
And, and I suppose that, you know, if it fits in with a ground cover, but it, I, I think, I mean, it's, it's not in lieu of the tertiary dwelling, it's, there's no, there's nothing that says what it is, so, there's not really a density, I, I guess it allows only one, is that right?
Yes.
So there's only one allowed, but it could technically be, at least the way it's written, I don't see that it couldn't be the fourth dwelling unit on the property, am I wrong?
No, I think, I think you're right, and I just wanna go back to something as well, too, if someone came in and said, I was gonna put up a tiny house, as opposed to, I'm gonna put up a tertiary dwelling, do you, as board members, would you reject that? I don't think so, I won't, because I, it's...
Make sure you take the wheels off.
Yeah, just let's just take the bloody wheels off.
If that's your tertiary.
Yeah.
It becomes your tertiary no matter what, and I agree with Andrew, I, 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 I'm concerned that all of a sudden you've just allowed four.
I'm just worried about the confusion at town meeting, because this, the article before this, we're increasing the tertiary to 650, or 550, which is our first year tweaking...
Six fifty.
Our first year tweaking of what?
Yeah, I agree.
Some said, I remember...
I think this just makes us look bad.
Dawn said it actually at the hearing.
But putting this in, we, we don't look like we're organized, and, and it looks like things are a mess.
Well, it needs to be fixed.
Everything's gotten cleaned up and kind of orderly, this isn't ready to go.
Well, it needs to be fixed, then, because he's gonna bring it up on town meeting floor, he's gonna get the support on town meeting floor, and it might not be correct, which is why Andrew or somebody needs to, to fix it again, this is like the fourth time in a year that we've all fixed it, since last year, we couldn't do it because it had some problems.
Well, why do we, why do we keep fixing something that we already have in place with something else?
Because he's going to get it passed at town meeting, because of the sentiment that I've been seeing, he's gonna get it passed, and if you don't think it's correct, then we need to correct it.
Linda, this question for you, if it's a tertiary building, then it's really a structure, and it has to get ACC approval, or...
These have to get ACC approval.
Does it, you know, that, if it's on wheels, does, is it required to get ACC, because it's not approved?
It's a structure, a habitable structure.
There should probably should be writing in that, because...
It says, it says a detached structure.
I, I, I really see two issues that, that have to be addressed, I think, through town council, is that, first of all, you've just potentially created a fourth dwelling, without really calling it that, and then, I think Andrew's absolutely correct, when you start limiting, and I can't say we've ever done that, where you start limiting dwellings to certain personnel, that's certainly not within the realm of zoning in any way, shape, or form.
I don't know where that came from.
Well, nonetheless, I mean, if there's support for it, let's, let's get real here, and I agree with Joe, I think, you know, it makes, it makes us look...
And, and Mr. Chairman...
I'm surprised we entertained this, even, I'm just surprised we entertained it.
The, the language was part of the original, it said, talked about any direct relative of that individual, so again...
I think it's back to ownership problems.
You know, and the other thing I'll say, and I, I like Isaiah.
I do.
He's a nice guy, and I know he's got his heart in my place, but he's not here today.
He thought I just...
I sort of like the people that don't...
He just texted me and said he didn't know it was tonight.
There you go!
So, whoa, whoa, and you just had a how long conversation with him, within the what?
No, that was like three weeks ago.
No, 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 but I mean, if he's at, you know, if he's really invested in this, he would know when it was, right? I mean, you know, I'm not knocking him, but he should be here.
Holly?
If I may just bring up a, a point, if, if this would be something that the board would want to endorse, to go forward at town meeting, wouldn't that bring up a enforcement of permitting community to move in tax, you know?
That's a good point.
No, it fits on a trailer, so long as it doesn't have to be cut, and no wires and stuff have to be moved, you can move it anytime you want, like a shed, if it won't fit under the wires, that's May 15 through, what, September 15, something like that? If you can throw it on the back of a trailer and trailer it down the road, you do not need an overland permit.
So, we're essentially setting up a, a trailer park concept here, where there's no definitive type sewer, no definitive type water, I should just run a water hose out to it?
No, it's gonna be required to meet all the same standards that any other habitable structure is gonna meet under the building code, everybody knows that does, does building.
I'm not sure I'm seeing that.
You don't put it in here, they won't give them a permit for it unless it has whatever, that's up to the health department and the building department, that's not anything we take under, we take on. I'm just afraid that it's going to go to town meeting without being completely fixed, and it's gonna pass.
Well, I'm, I'm concerned, too, that, that there's been...
If you don't fix it.
That there's been some interaction to try to fix something that was kind of broken to begin with, with the representation of, this should fix it and carry it forward, I'm just saying.
No, it would get it in here enough to get fo, to get in here.
But I'm afraid somehow, somewhere amidst all these conversations, that not the entire board has been privileged to, it's kind of been a pro offer, it's just, it's...
Oh, come on, Barry, you can work with anybody you wanna work with, if you, if you see problems, you have concerns, I expressed those concerns with him, I said, you need to come in and talk to Leslie to see if there's any way to technically fix the real big flaws, and that's what happened, anybody can do that at any time, without your permission, and I resent you criticizing, trying to help him do a citizens' warrant article, that we should help people do, we spend a lot of time helping everybody else, whether you agree with the concept or not is immaterial, Barry.
And I disagree with you respectfully, and that's okay, we can agree to, we can agree to disagree, Linda.
Do you wanna hold it over, give the chance to amend it, or do we wanna vote on it?
I think we're out of time.
They're closing everything tomorrow.
Yeah, we are out of time.
Has, has town council looked at some of this godly work, Andrew, do you know? Definitely some legal issues, stuff.
No, we can't really expect Isaiah to come here and explain his article.
Yes, public hearing, we're still dealing with it as a board at the moment.
How I look at this, Joe, from just simple, if, if this, okay, if this is an, an alternative to the tertiary, which is what I think, this is supposed to...
It's an adjunct to it.
What does adjunct mean?
It means it's just another mechanism to get into the housing market.
But it, no, but it's an alternative to the tertiary, in the sense it's a third building, you can't have four kitchens on a lot now, right?
It's an alternative scheme, as opposed to a permanently rooted structure.
No, I, I understand, but once you...
This is something that can be sold to someone else, and here's your trailer driveway.
But, but you, but once it's on your property, for temporary, wheels are off, et cetera, hooked up to whatever, you can't build a tertiary, too, that's your tertiary till this moves, right?
Right.
Right.
Okay, so this is a way to have a cheaper version of a tertiary?
Yes.
That you can buy, bring it on the boat, drive down the road, I'm just saying, I'm trying to, I'm thinking of what the audience is gonna have, and who's gonna answer these questions, because it's going to be questions.
I understand.
Yes.
I'm just trying to play zone of both sides.
I don't think it's ready to go, because we don't have those answers.
I, I agree, but, here's the problem, is that, I think that, I understand what Linda's saying.
So do I, it's a good point.
This is one of these, I don't think this is gonna be Richard Ray with pom poms, though, because that already happened, and he got, and he was so in favor of the tertiary dwelling, I actually didn't expect that, okay, so, what I'm saying is, the tertiary, we're fixing the tertiary flaw in the previous article with 650, because... It was a flaw in the sense of, like, a lot of the ones that are already out there are already bigger than 550s and more, okay, now we're coming in with something a little confusing, the word wheels, once people see that word, it's gonna change the way people think.
I'm standing.
Slab, quick, dang, it's gonna sound funny and weird, and there's gonna be some odd questions, that's all I'm saying, I just wanna make sure we're right, and let the voters vote, I'd have no problem with that part of it, but I just wanna make sure that we don't look stupid, to us.
I'm on your team.
That's all I'm saying.
Okay.
We just got this big change, and we're gonna, messing around with this is weird, in my opinion, and I know it's political, but that's a different story.
Yeah, go ahead. Yeah, go ahead.
So, Ms. Chairman, I mean, I think the only real difference that really we would focus on, I mean, the tiny house unit should be considered a tertiary unit, so it's not the fourth dwelling unit. It's just an option, is what I just heard from you all.
Yeah.
And the only thing that we need to talk about is that it's constructed on the movable trailer. The rest of it shouldn't even be considered in the article. Furthermore, the planning board doesn't grant a special permit for a tertiary, so why would you make it even more difficult unless you're actually proposing a fourth dwelling unit? So, if this is at all salvageable, it's focusing on that, number one. And then, because of its trailer-like characteristic, you need to focus on three. Not include two at all, because that's a special permit. I mean, you need to make it a subset of the tertiary.
That's what I think.
Only.
What areas, though? Same areas, the R5 to AUG3?
It's... It's the same areas, yeah. So that, again, it gets rid of this redundancy. And then... So, limiting it to family members is out. Making it a subset of the tertiary dwelling allowance that already exists. Really, the key... The key thing is the movable trailer. And then, you have to... If you're going to allow movable trailer houses, you have to amend 7B prohibited uses. So, if you're inclined to support it, that's where it's got to be, in my opinion. And I'm not saying I support this. I don't know that this is...
But I just want to fix it without getting all crazy on town meeting floor. If you think that's the way it should go, let them, let the people do it, but let's make sure it's correct, so something screwy doesn't get passed.
Well, I...
But what about our...
Ms. Chairman, could I?
Yeah.
I mean, I would be happy to, again, for the board to give a motion not to adopt, because it's really not ready right now, but to write a reasonable amendment that the sponsor can bring up on his own.
Yes, that's what I'd like to do.
But I would... I don't think... I think that this is, you know, again, it's... We're always there for any citizen to help write the article from the very start, and a lot of these got submitted and then have to be sort of tweaked and reworked.
Yeah.
And I think... I just think it will be more confusing for us to try to fix this. I think that, unfortunately, you know, we're here at the end of the line here, and I don't think the board should recommend this, but we can at least create an alternative motion if he decides to bring it forward. But I think that it should be deferred to the special. We pretty much heard that we're having one. And then, the article written correctly from the start, resubmitted. But if they want to, they can, you know... Well, again, we can help them get a technically correct amendment to put forward.
And I will tell you, Joe, you know what's going to happen? Turn this back on. Huntington Homes is going to be making tertiary dwellings. Oh, whatever. You just answered it even better. And we're kind of reinventing something we just fixed, we just got passed a year ago, and now we're going to have... Trying to create something that's going to happen by itself. It's going to happen. The market is going to create a... I mean, it's not going to be on wheels necessarily, but there's going to be modular, it'll be cheaper.
Easily movable.
And I'm just... This is... I know that we're trying to do this for him, and he keeps coming back with it, but like, we already kind of did it for him.
I agree.
I wish we didn't have...
He didn't accept that the trailer is a big part of this. So if Andrew can write, Andrew Leslie can write something that is technically correct and hand him, and let him go with God on town meeting floor, that's fine. But I don't want this to get passed with more flunk.
I agree with that 100 percent. So what do we do tonight?
I think Andrew's got on the right track.
I would recommend a motion of not to adopt.
Yeah.
Okay.
And a comment that, you know, that you recommend that this...
It's almost like a motion.
Be resubmitted at a... At another town meeting in the correct form.
All right, I'll move that.
In the meantime, we will write a technical amendment, should the sponsor want to proceed. But again, the focus would only be on what we talked about. That this is a substitute for the tertiary dwelling.
A subset.
Yes. Well, it's a choice, and then town meeting can debate the idea of this trailer and relaxing that standard.
Okay. Well, I moved to do that.
Hold on, hold on.
Is it still over the 500?
Oh, it's still open.
Yeah, I got it. I've got to do that in a minute. That's okay.
I just leave it as a tertiary... Leave it under the tertiary dwelling allowance.
With the 650?
Correct.
Yeah.
If you wanted to change it to 650 to track anyway.
You did want to change it to 650.
Right, and I'm fine leaving it in the tertiary dwelling section, because it keeps everything consistent again in one spot and one spot only.
And you see the word "village"?
The next one, it's out.
All right, anyways.
It's going forward with the...
All right, all right, all right, all right.
Is there anyone in... Ladies and gentlemen, the public hearing's open, if anyone would like to comment on this.
You're not running down here.
Mr. Santos, he is. Yeah, he is.
Good. There he goes, fix us.
Yeah, I think a couple of... I think you're going to have issues with Title V, sewer connection, water connection. And then, are these wheels to be hidden when you bring this in? Or is it going to be skirted? Or what's it going to look like when it's actually on the lot and the wheels are still there, or they're not there?
The wheels come off.
Yeah.
We went over this with him in great detail, because I wasn't going anywhere from an ACC perspective unless I knew the wheels can come off. Apparently, the wheels are made to come off and a skirt, either, you know, vertical board or lattice. They're 12 inches off the ground. Oh, Leslie, that's the one part that was missing. They're probably about 12 inches, eight to 12 inches off the ground, and... Or they're set into just a concrete...
Yeah.
What do they call those things? Those walls? Little concrete fake wall where the floor is actually below it. You know, it's set into a baffle.
Yeah, like a mudsel.
Yeah. And then you just take it out and roll the... Put the wheels back on.
I think the water sewer connection stuff is...
Yeah, and we warned him. That's what I'm saying. Maybe five people in 10 years are going to take advantage of this, but at least it's one more option. Somebody really wants to go there.
Anyone else in the audience wishing to comment on this? Do we take a motion to close the public hearing then?
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Do I hear a second? Discussion? Hearing none, all those in... That's beautiful.
Musical interlude.
And that was beautiful. It's the only two words you needed. It was the only two words you needed.
I can do Born to be Wild on my phone. That's what my win tone is.
Just hold on for a second. Okay, so we really...
Are we over the at last now?
Yeah, thank you. So, the motion is made second to close the public hearing. All those in favor, please say aye.
All right.
Those opposed, ayes have you unanimously, in the pleasure of the board.
I can do this motion.
Which was?
Was to not to adopt.
That's with that.
With the notation that we'll put in.
With the notation that he can amend its...
Technical amendment.
Technical amendment.
With a...
Heavy technical amendment.
Staff's going to provide it, right?
Yep.
That's not in the motion.
Yeah, it's not a part of the motion.
Okay.
And we'll...
We'll comment.
The comment would be that we recommend that this be... Because I think, you know, the issues that Paul raised, there's a number... I mean, the HTC would have to consider changing its rules and regs for these. The Board of Health would probably have some new standards. There's a bunch of things that would come out of this. So, it needs more time for it to be fully examined, so...
Just not recommending?
So, I think it should be a motion not to adopt, and I think that the, you know, the article in its absolute correct form would be submitted at a future town meeting. Now, in the meantime, just like the other people who, you know, if there are people that want to call the article and bring... We obviously... It's in our interest to have them bring a technically correct motion.
Correct.
And we will help him get a motion which focuses on the things we talked about. But that's not part of your recommendation to town meeting right now.
So, that motion is now, if we're all clear, that motion's now made in second discussion?
I didn't make it.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
We abstain.
Let the record reflect, that's three to one with Ms. Williams abstaining. Brings us to Article 53. We're here again. Zoning by law amendment to Chapter 139, Section...
We're at 55 now, Mark Barry.
What happened to 53?
53, you don't make a motion.
I'm sorry, whoa, 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 whoa.
That's his other one he's agreed to withdraw.
Oh.
Whoa, hold on. So, which...
That's the village. 53 is the village one. You know, little trailer park. He's agreed not to go forward with that.
All right, but then, the board still has to...
Right.
You still have to open the public hearing. You have to make a decision. Just because he's withdrawn it, okay? It's still actively before, so let's just do the correct procedural thing here. So, board members, we're aware he's withdrawing it at this point. Is there anyone in the audience who'd like to comment on this?
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Thank you, and do I hear a second? Discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
I'll make a motion to not... Recommend not to adopt.
That would be appropriate. Do I hear a second? Discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Ayes have you unanimously. Article 55, zoning by law amendment, Chapter 139, Sections 2 and 8 of the Code of the Town and Nantucket, to allow secondary dwellings to be sold to qualified family members without being subject to the Nantucket Housing Needs Covenant Ownership Form. This is a citizen's petition.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, ma'am.
There was a draft motion provided to everyone tonight, and I have gone over this with town council.
Yep.
It incorporates the required changes that we talked about at the last meeting, which is that the qualified family member lot, if you will, will remain subject to the Nantucket Housing Needs Covenant. It just won't be subject to the income or asset requirements of the covenant. So, I've gone over this with George Pucci.
Yep.
He did suggest a super minor language change in number one, but nothing that really affects our conversation tonight. What we did discover is that even if this is approved by town meeting, the enabling legislation establishing the covenant program would have to be amended at a future town meeting. And Chapter 100 of the General Code, which talks about the covenant program, would also have to be amended at a special or annual town meeting. So, our recommendation, if the board is so inclined to recommend approval, would be to go ahead with it at this meeting, so we can see if there's buy-in for it or not. And then, at a future meeting, we'll do the other two steps.
Wouldn't that by me again, to go ahead and do this one? And just know that we can't do anything until we get something else in the fall?
Right, so to proceed with the zoning piece, to see if there's general approval for it, and then we'll do the enabling legislation and the general by law amendment at a later time.
The other question was, Barry, was the question I had a problem with. The qualified family member, does that include stepkids?
It does.
Because we wanted to change that.
Yes, the owner's spouse and the spouse's children, so that would be the stepchildren.
Okay.
Anything else from the board? Public hearing, ladies and gentlemen, if anyone would like to comment on this? Not seeing any comments.
Motion to close the public hearing.
Do I hear a second? Discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Ayes have you unanimously, in the pleasure of the board.
Motion to make a favorable recommendation.
Okay.
With the changes that Leslie gave us.
Got it.
Second by law.
Yeah, that's okay. Second, Leslie, is that just something that we want to put a little addendum on it? Or do you want to just leave it quiet? We'll bring it up later.
Should we just put a comment?
Yeah, so we'll add a planning board comment.
That would be good.
For the next two steps.
That would be good. I think that just, considering you brought the issue forward.
That's my motion.
All right, so that motion's made in second. It's still... Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Ayes have you unanimously. Article 56. If you'll allow me to waive that, it's a citizen's petition similar to 55. Andrew, Leslie?
Mr. Chairman, in light of your recommendation on Article 55, we recommend that you take no action on Article 56.
So moved, oh.
Hold on, board members?
I'm also...
Okay, good. Anyone in the public wanting to comment?
Motion to close the public hearing.
Thank you, there we go. Discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have you unanimously and the pleasure of the board.
Motion to not to take no action.
Take no action, good. Discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have you unanimously. Do we need a meeting tomorrow then?
No.
Nope, okay. I just want to clear that, and we do have, what, the 17th still?
Yeah, the 17th, we had to move to 1:30.
Okay.
From 1 o'clock.
So it was at 12.
It says 12 here on there.
Because if you get an agency...
Okay, maybe I'm getting the times mixed up.
Yeah, any going there later than 12.
Oh, it was tomorrow, then, okay. So we're not having the meeting tomorrow, so never mind.
That's...
Okay, sorry about that.
Noon at the 17th.
All these meetings, so noon on the 17th is set.
Yep, okay. Hold on just for, we good?
We're good.
Go.
All of us have to come on the 17th now and move things ahead yet?
Yes.
Yes, so if you were sitting on, what's...
I was sitting at things, so I'm sorry.
Okay.
Yeah, you really...
12, not 1:30?
12 o'clock.
I would just strongly suggest both of you do show up at that point and make sure...
Yes, please.
Oh, yeah.
I wish we could have some. It would make it much more exciting.
There you go.
Not out of the public.
Yep, I'm sorry. Leslie, Andrew, did you have anything else?
No.
Is there any other business before this?
Yes.
Oh, sorry. Yes, please, 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 go ahead.
Isn't John McLaughlin's term going to be up soon?
It is.
It is.
Yes, his last meeting would have been tonight.
Besides...
Well, didn't I do that the last meeting? I said...
I mean, I mean something...
A letter or something?
Well, I think in...
Well, I think we'll announce something at the town meeting.
Play, play.
That'll be done. You get Sarah to do that.
Or maybe something here at the board as well. You know, because the other thing, I...
I'm just saying, he doesn't come to the meeting, so we can't...
No, I agree, but the other thing too is I'd be really quick, a little bit cautious about handing him his hat and his coat because he's still on the HDC. So I think something from us, maybe at a planning board meeting, might be kind of appropriate. And then I think when he's ready to retire from everything, let's, let's do something on a very grand scale at that juncture. I'm just, I'm just kind of concerned the message it kind of sends out.
Did you hear what you heard?
Yeah, kind of, sort of. Kind of, sort of.
So tonight would have been his last regular planning board meeting.
Right, right. But would you guys be good with doing something like that? It's just, I just, huh?
I mean, see if I show up. I guess it's a question.
Yeah, we do need to do a letter, but I'm just...
That's what we put in the paper. Thank you for your 500 years of dedicated service.
Yeah.
To the planning board.
And I don't mind publicly recognizing here, I've just, I just, yeah, I just don't, I'm afraid doing it at a town meeting is kind of like a weird thing since he's still...
Does at a town meeting. They do it all the time.
Grant got it. John, I mean, uh...
But they, they officially retired from everything at that stage. They weren't actively...
No, 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 no.
Jackson, a lot of it is...
I have it in an email because someone asked me to do the research.
Yeah, I think that's fine.
Well...
It was in, I think, 1990?
No, 1998.
You don't want to leave them out.
No, I don't want to, I don't want to leave them out. I'm just kind of feeling a little, I'm feeling like you brought up earlier, there's, here's your hat, here's your coat, what's the rush?
He doesn't look at it that way.
Yeah.
It'll be fine.
I'd like to make a motion to do, I'd like to make a motion to do a display ad thanking him for his however many years of service to the planning board.
Sure.
Okay.
And then send him a letter. We can all sign it.
Yeah, that's fine.
That's my motion.
Like that. Second?
You second it?
Yep, that was made in second discussion, hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
I do have another question.
Yep.
I see that we got an extension for McKinnon's 106 sur side. Are they going forward on April 14th?
I was informed today that they are going forward. And they've asked to do a site visit, as of today I was informed, they've asked to do a site visit either on the 22nd or 23rd. They've asked for a date certain so that they can put the balloons and the stakes up such that they won't pop and so forth. So I have to discuss with my supervisors and my chairman when, what will happen with that. I have my monthly meeting, we have our monthly meeting on Thursdays. It's not on the agenda as a discussion item, but it doesn't necessarily need to. However, given the interest this application is garnered from a lot of people in the public in the neighborhood, the chairman would like it to be on the agenda, but we haven't made a decision yet. This has all come about today.
Just a question for you. I know you asked for a deadline of March 21st. I'm losing two of my regular board members Thursday afternoon. One isn't coming back until the 28th, one is coming back on the 22nd. Can the HDC have another few days to get you a response?
I'm fine with that. I need to get my chairman to okay that, but I personally don't have the problem and would recommend that he approve that.
Because we can meet on the 24th.
In addition to which, if there's no, if the site visit happens on the 22nd or 23rd, HDC members may want to come.
Well, I know they want to come.
When that happens, I'm going to send out an email to all of those local board departments, as well as the people with whom I've communicated who have, who have lived the neighborhood, will be informed, you know, figure what procedure will be...
The 22nd's a problem for a lot of reasons, because a couple of us are also the same people on CPC and we meet the 22nd at the same time.
I don't know what will work.
23rd is going to work better, let's put it that way. If you had, if you had a choice, the 23rd would work better, but I would also like until...
Well, the stakes will be up and the balloon will be up, so it doesn't necessarily...
Yeah, but I want to make sure that we can get a little bit more, what's the drop-dead time for the HDC?
I'll have to...
Okay, because I'm going to move the meeting off the 17th right now.
It's my idea, as you know.
Is there anything else for the planning board?
Yes.
Because we're kind of, we're dealing with, yeah, did you have something else, Andrew?
Yes.
Yes, there's, because tomorrow is the close of, we have to basically get the final planning board recommendation on what's being printed out tomorrow.